Excuse me, I'd like to bring to order the, ladies and gentlemen, thank you. I'd like to bring to order the San Rafael City Council meeting of Tuesday, September 3rd, 2019, ask you to join us, pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under our, in this world, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, everyone. We met in closed session, and I'll ask our city attorney if there was any, or if there was any reportable action.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, no reportable action was taken in closed session.
Thank you. Next, we have time for public expression, that is, for anyone that's with us this evening that would like to bring to our attention matters that are on your mind, will not be able to take any action on the items since they're on the agenda, but certainly interested in your comments and your input, and we'll start with Greg Knell.
Thank you, I'm Renz, not here to complain.
You never do, so that's good.
Here as President of San Rafael City Schools, certainly my best friend, trustee for your schools.
Thanks, Lindsey. We want to formally introduce to you our new superintendent, we hired after a long search. We had thirty-two applicants, all sitting superintendents or assistant superintendents. A lot of people want to come to San Rafael, a lot of people wanted to work in San Rafael, and we found the best candidate to be right here in Marin County, the superintendent of Nevada Public Schools. As representative of one-third of your city, our families that have students and our members and employees of San Rafael City Schools, I'd like to introduce Jim Hoagaboom, the new superintendent of San Rafael City Schools.
Thank you, Greg, and welcome, Jim.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council members, great to be here, I've had a great welcome in San Rafael, so I'm really happy to be here, and look forward to working with all of you guys, I invite you to come with me as I visit the schools, we have some great things going on, I got a chance to go to all of our schools over the last week with our first week of school, which went really, really well, and really excited about some partnerships that we have, I've gotten to know your police chief Bishop really well, where is she? Back there, there she is, working with you guys, we're trying to get another school resource officer, we've applied for a grant from the state that she really took the lead on writing, so excited about that, we're excited about expanding partnerships that we have with you guys with childcare, recreation, and our library programs, housing is a big issue with us, we need to attract and retain the best employees we can, and we can't do that if it's too expensive to live, I know you have some housing items, transportation is another one, and finally immigration, the current policies are really causing a lot of stress, anxiety, and hardship with a lot of our families and their parents, so we look forward to working with you guys on those issues as well, but I'm just really happy to be here and to meet you all, and look forward to getting to know everybody in the future, thanks for having me.
Well, welcome to San Rafael, we had a nice discussion the other day, I was pleased to meet you with the new superintendent and chat about some usual issues, so it was a pleasure indeed, and once again, welcome on behalf of the city council and everyone within our community, thank you.
Thank you.
Tom Oblitz, Tom. Good evening.
Good evening. Mr. Mayor, Council, City Manager, and Staff, Tom Oblitz, I'm here to talk on three quick items, I know we have a full agenda tonight.
We do.
First is honoring our former city clerk Jean Leontini, after thirty years of service to our city, she will be missed. Second, the San Rafael Pacifics Baseball Club won their second championship back-to-back in eight years of existence, it's a great opportunity for the new ownership team, maybe we'll have a ticker tape parade down Forest Street.
Why not?
And lastly, San Rafael Porch Fest, I created Porch Fest last year and had a tremendous amount of support for the Free Day of Music and Community in the Gerstel Park Neighborhood. Porch Fest is coming again, Sunday, September twenty-second, noon to five, you're all invited to take the free shuttle from the Third and C Street Garage, ride a bike, or walk to Porch Fest in the Gerstel Park Neighborhood to hear nearly fifty musicians perform an incredible variety of music on over thirty porches. I'm gonna say thanks to the mayor, Chief Bishop, Director Andre D. Wax, the city clerk, and of course, Brian Auger. And I have, I have turned management of the event over to the Gerstel Park Neighborhood Association and its president, Gina Silvestri, who will be the next speaker.
Oh, good.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. I won't normally say anything after the speakers, it's not protocol, but in this case, I will, I would encourage all of you to join us at Porch Fest, it was really a delightful first year event last year, and even probably more so this year, particularly if Gina's involved. And yes, Gina's sorely missed, we went to her, many of us went to her service Saturday, this past Saturday, and it was, she's a remarkable person that we all wish to remember, and we shall. Gina, good evening.
Good evening, everyone, I'm Gina Silvestri, I'm the current president of the Gerstel Park Neighborhood Association, and like Tom said, our neighborhood is very happy to be hosting the second annual San Rafael Porch Fest, coming up on Sunday afternoon, September twenty-second, it's a perfect Sunday afternoon with community building, it's one-hundred percent free, no charge to attend, the bands, over fifty have generously donated their time to play, and we have, you name a genre, and we have it coming to play, we're gonna be starting off this year's event with a authentic New Orleans marching brass band, we have, it's a Sunday afternoon, we have a gospel choir, name your favorite local band, and they're probably gonna be there, so, and we're very happy to be partnering with some amazing partners, including Whistle Stop, that's gonna be doing a shuttle from the C Street parking lot back and forth continuously to D Street, so we welcome all of you, and thank you.
Wonderful, thanks, thanks again.
Sure, and we have posters for you.
Ms. Locke.
Ms. Locke?
Yes, since I, I've-
Because you can't read the other way.
Pronouncing incorrectly twice now, I'm not gonna chance it one again, Malia, how are you this evening?
I'm very good, it's salama, say it.
Salama, I know, I've got this mental block, think of salami, I guess.
That's what, I don't eat salami, that's to help you, okay.
Okay, you're welcome.
Well, good evening, Mayor and council members, I'm here to talk about, but this, the Commission on Aging is going to be presenting on this Thursday at Pickleweed, Fifty Canal Street, from ten to eleven will be insights on Medicare, all the changes, and we will have three high-cap counselors, Frank Nelson, Karen Albright, and Diana Lopez, who also is a commissioner for San Rafael, or for District One, excuse me, and also, so as I said, there'll be all the preview of the changes for what's happening with Medicare. And then next month, just to say, heads up for next month, we're gonna be at Marin City at the Senior Center, and it's all about Sensus 2020, so what it means for you, got it? Thank you.
Thanks, Salma. Next person is John Boland, I have some cards, then we'll open it up for anyone else that wants to speak. John, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Honorable City Council Members, my name is John Boland, pardon me, I am the President of the Bay Point Lagoons Homeowners Association, and we had a very scary event occur this last week, it was a fire adjacent to our homes, we have a group of thirty-four homes along Bay Point Boulevard, which is along the Starkweather Pathway, the Starkweather Pathway is adjacent to the Grange property, and along that pathway and in the Grange property, there are homeless encampments that are pretty much continuously in existence, they are in different locations, but they are pretty much always there, we, the fire occurred early in the morning, it was before seven o'clock in the morning when many people were asleep, thanks to the rapid response and the efficiency of the San Rafael Fire Department, the fire was put out, but it raged, and along that pathway, which is about six feet wide, on the Grange side, adjacent to where his overgrown property is, there are, there are shrubs that are dying, and they're fire-prone, and they're high, and it wouldn't take very much for the, for the fire to come across the pathway, and our homes have their back fences right against the Starkweather Pathway, so they're very vulnerable, and so, we understand there's gonna be a fire, there is a Fire Wildfire Prevention and Protection Action Plan, we would like very much to know specifically what is gonna be done along that pathway, what's gonna be done along the Grange property there, which is really where most of the fires have come from, and there have been other fires over the years, so again, I realize you can't comment on that, not prepared to do that, obviously, but we wanna know, we'll, that's two minutes, is it?
Finish your sentence.
Yeah, yeah, we just like to, we, I have some contact information, I'd like, we'd like to hear what, what the plan's gonna be for now and for the future.
And we do have a comprehensive plan that's in the making, and you're certainly welcome to join us this evening, it won't be quite on point, I don't think, but having said that, I'll also talk with Fred Grange.
Good, thank you, thank you for that, Mr. Mayor.
You shouldn't be, have to put up with this, thank you. Lisa Marchante.
Mayor Phillips and council members.
Good evening.
Good evening. Do you think the smart horn testing negatively affects the quality of life of those it keeps awake?
Can you speak up just a little?
Do you think the smart horn testing negatively affects the quality of life of those it keeps awake?
We won't be able to address that question, but please proceed.
According to the mandates of San Rafael, the city council is elected to enhance the quality of life and provide for a safe, healthy, prosperous, and livable city, we're not having that experience right now, we're having sleep deprivation, poor health, poor function, blood sugar instability, it's not healthy and it's not good, and we want something done about it immediately.
And I'll make a brief comment here in a moment on that issue, anyone else wish to address us this evening, yes, ma'am?
Good evening, everyone, I'm here representing Bay Point Lagoons Community, my name is Donna Saberman, my husband Mark and I have lived in San Rafael for over fifty years, and have been in the Bay Point community for twenty-one years, all of us here tonight are here to ask for help from each of you now, we are asking for urgent and immediate help regarding the health and safety and future of our community, we need your right-thinking decisions to ensure our future in Bay Point Lagoons. At nine PM last Monday night, I smelled smoke, I called the fire department, they came, they looked, they smelled it, they couldn't find anything, but were there at six AM the next morning and saw the fire, thirty feet in the air, thirty feet wide, right behind my home. The fire trucks, the fire trucks and the men that were there put everything out. For months, we have worked with our HOA and asked for help from our city government and officials, that is, the San Rafael Police, John Cone, San Rafael Police Ranger, and San Rafael Department of Public Works, they have been responsive and responded to our concerns regarding excessive trash and garbage on the path, homeless encampments, and fires on city property. Our city has not done enough to help us solve the real issue, the mismanagement of the Grange property, our concerns are about easy access to this private property, lack of vegetation management, increasing fire danger, selling of and use of drugs, disposal of drug paraphernalia, human excrement, and garbage disposal, and now we are at risk from fire more than ever. We hope our city government will recognize these threats, listen to our requests, and decisively and ASAP help us to protect our very beautiful community and health and safety of its residents, thank you for listening.
And thank you, and like I said, we will have a discussion, ma'am. Any, anyone, anyone else wish to address us this time, please, free for all?
Hi, my name is Deborah Solvason, and I don't know the protocol for this and didn't anticipate speaking, but I was pretty miserable last night, yesterday, after not sleeping for three nights in a row, and then, of course, I looked it up to figure out what was going on, and I saw, it said it can go until three-thirty AM with the train, but they lay on that horn, and it was five AM on Monday that it stopped, and then to only find, when I looked at the smart train site, that it in fact is going to be another three days this next weekend, that's intolerable for those of us, I mean, it's all night long, you're up, awake, it's hot nights, windows are open, but that is, it's really intolerable, and I understand one night, maybe separated out over time, but three nights in a row, two weekends in a row, I think is unrealistic, and I live out in East San Rafael, so I'm at Point San Pedro Road, I'm quite a ways away from it, and I heard it all the way through until it hit the tunnel, and then again, when it hits on the Larkspur side, and I just, I think that, I understand they have a schedule, but you guys do need to intervene, it's not, I mean, otherwise, some of us have to leave town this weekend, because that's unbelievably difficult to sleep, and three nights in a row of losing sleep for families, for everybody, people who have to work, it's just not acceptable, thank you.
Thanks, and I hear you, anyone else?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members, I'm Stephen Bingham, and I'm here tonight as co-director of the Sylvia Bingham Fund, which works for pedestrian and bicycle safety, among other things, and I just want to put something on your radar to think about, and it occurred to me to do it tonight, because on your consent calendar, you're gonna be voting to purchase a dump truck. Cities across the country have begun to install side barriers on large trucks, San Francisco now has it, has them on their garbage trucks, it's an issue that's particularly special to my wife and myself, because our daughter was killed by a box truck that rolled over her, had there been side barriers on the truck, there's a chance that she would have been badly injured but not killed, so I've given to the clerk some information that could perhaps be passed along, it's too late to ask that you, as for specification for this particular truck, I'm not asking for that, but I would like it to be very much on the radar in San Rafael, Seattle is moving, Boston, several big cities, I'm not aware of smaller cities, and it isn't just side barriers, one of the two documents lists some other things that have to do with technical specifications that are now available for vehicles, cars, and trucks, and cities, frankly, where there's fleets can lead the way and give an example to private persons purchasing their own vehicles if they take a step in that direction, and I'd be happy to talk with anyone on staff about it.
And thanks for providing the information, Stephen.
Thank you.
Any, yes, come on up. Good evening.
Hi, thank you.
If you'd identify yourself, please.
My name is Lisa Zaslove, I live on Bay Point Village Drive, twenty-five Bay Point Village Drive, and this is actually a letter that I drafted to the county assessor, but it definitely addresses the quality of life issues along, along that street, there is the adjacent field across the street, the Toyota lot has been expanded on that right side, but anyway, here it is, "I am writing to request reduction of my 2019-2020 property tax because of critical factors which have negatively impacted both my property's market value, as well as overall quality of life, including environmental concerns, the City of San Rafael and Department of Public Works have been using the field immediately across the street on Bay Point Village Drive as a staging site and dump, as a result, there is constant activity and noise from tractors, dump trucks, and cranes, beginning at seven AM, sometimes earlier, and sometimes late into the night, these special projects have necessitated calling the police and Department of Public Works on numerous occasions, according to three realtors who specialize in Spinnaker and Bay Point Lagoons, my house has experienced a sharp decline in value during the past two years, mainly attributable to these conditions. In the past month, two houses have come on the market on my block, one at seventeen Bay Point Village Drive, the other at twenty-seven Bay Point Village Drive, the first is listed for eight hundred thousand, the second at seven ninety-five, both have near identical floor plans and square footage as mine, to date, neither house has received a single offer, the listing agents for both properties told me that potential buyers are turned off by the unsightly views, particularly from the master bedrooms, along with the noise and dust generated by activity in the field, personally, I've experienced symptoms of anxiety and sleep disturbance because of being abruptly awakened early to the sounds of trucks backing up and dumping load after load of dirt, gravel, and other debris, I like my home and neighborhood, but this situation must be addressed and the problems mitigated or eliminated, my neighbors and I should not have to repeatedly call the Department of Public Works or police, or be forced ultimately to sell our properties at an unfair loss and move, we deserve peace of mind and a reasonable right to enjoy our homes as responsible taxpayers."
And thanks for your note, and I'll ask the city, city manager, and under his report to respond, if he's able at this point, if not, the next meeting.
And I have left messages for the Department of Public Works.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Sure, of course. Any, anyone else? Seeing none, we'll close and come back, and ask for the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor and council, first item, the city attorney wanted to make an announcement regarding closed session.
Yes, thank you, Mr. City Manager, Mr. Mayor, I misspoke earlier when I said that there was no reportable action taken in closed session, I was reviewing the government code and realized that the third item that the council heard tonight, in closed session and voted on unanimously, is one subject to disclosure following the closed session, so I wanted to speak about it briefly, specifically, the code requires that if there is approval given to entering as an amicus curae in any form of litigation, that that needs to be reported in an open session, and that's what the council did tonight. The case in question is Martin versus City of Boise, it was published by the Ninth Circuit earlier this year, and in that case, the Ninth Circuit held that enforcing public camping and public sleeping ordinances against homeless individuals, when no sleeping space is quote "practically available," violates the Eighth Amendment to the United States Constitution and may give rise to civil liability under the U.S. Code, Section nineteen eighty-three. So, the City of Boise heard from a lot of other cities when this decision came down because of its implications, and it requested rehearing before the ninth hearing en banc, and that was denied, but there was a dissent that was stated by Justice Smith of the Ninth Circuit, which really sort of summarized the concern that was being stated by cities, the, that justice said that the decision that the court had made earlier in the year leaves cities with a Hobson's choice, they must either undertake an overwhelming financial responsibility to provide housing for or count the number of homeless individuals within their jurisdiction every night, or abandon enforcement of a host of laws regulating public health and safety, and it's for that reason that the City of Boise is now petitioning for U.S. Supreme Court review, it's represented by the firm of Gibson Dunn, and its attorneys have asked the Rennie Public Law Group to author an amicus curae brief, and that's the brief that a number of California cities are being requested to join, and which this city council considered a closed session this evening and voted unanimously to participate in as amicus curae. So, once I recognized that it was required that we report, I wanted to make clear what the action was about, so I appreciate the opportunity to do so, Mr. Mayor.
Certainly, and thanks for doing so.
Thank you.
I just want to make sure that the city attorney's comments don't cut into my time at all, and I still have my full-time and ability to address the council.
Justified.
The first thing I wanted, I have a couple announcements and a couple observations in advance of tonight's meeting, which is an important meeting, we have a lot on the agenda, on the announcement side, I wanted to let the council and the community know that the City of San Rafael, just, we were notified last week that we, through the Institute of Local Government, that San Rafael received the full gold level Beacon Award for Sustainability, it's a really big deal because of San Rafael was the first ever Beacon Award winner in 2013, winning a silver level award on that year, and now we've won a full gold level Beacon Award for gold, for agency, meaning the City of San Rafael, greenhouse gas reductions, and also for energy savings, and then another gold level award for community, greenhouse gas reductions, and lastly, a platinum level award for sustainability best practices. So, it's great to be able to see that, it's through the Institute of Local Government, which is the League of California Cities, representing all of the cities in the state of California, so these are, these are not very common, so it's great to have won all of these, both gold and platinum level awards, and really speaks a lot to the sustainability program that we have here in San Rafael. Secondly, there, I knew that we'd have a lot of people in the audience, so I wanted to mention that there's a Marin Volunteer Fair on September seventh, that is at the Marin Civic Center, specifically the Children's Island at Lagoon Park that's coming up, it's the second annual, and it's the opportunity for people who want to volunteer in their community to get connected with nonprofits and organizations that are looking for volunteers in all sorts of different areas, so we are always happy to have volunteers in the City of San Rafael, and we use them extensively, but there's a lot of local nonprofits throughout our county that are also looking for volunteers, and are putting together this event from ten AM to two PM on September seventh at the Lagoon Park. I also wanted to make a note that our police department has a series of upcoming meetings in order to work with the community, get feedback on the work of the police department, understand the needs from the community's perspective, and look at public safety from a problem-solving perspective, and there are four different meetings, and they're in four different regions of the city, and we're not that big of a city, so hopefully anyone will be able to, one of these times will work out, on September ninth, tenth, seventeenth, and eighteenth, I think because there's, there's four different dates, and four times, and four locations, I would just ask people to look at our website, it's right on our homepage, but they're, they're all in the evening, and they're all at either a community center, or also, we're partnering with San Rafael High and Davidson Middle School to have meetings there as well, so anyone who wants to participate and give comments, their perceptions of what's going on in the community, what they'd like to see more or less of, that sort of thing, I know that the police department will have a program, but they're completely open to all sorts of conversation that takes place at those meetings. I also wanted to acknowledge the significance of a couple items on tonight's agenda, I'm not gonna talk specifically about them, because I'll do that when the items come up later, but I just, at this stage, just wanted to mention that there's a lot of big ideas on a couple items on tonight's agenda, the wildfire prevention, and also the how to get more housing built, and a couple things on the procedures of those that I, that I wanted to mention, but first, on wildfire, as a community, I see everything as a question of trade-offs and resources, we're not able to do everything that we would want to be able to do as a city based on limited amount of people that we have and resources, so regarding fire, I wanted to share with you my personal opinion of where our community, like most communities, have put our resources, and we have an amazing fire department with extremely dedicated people that respond, you know, a hundred percent of the time, in seconds or a couple minutes to calls, they're very, very dedicated, do a fantastic job, they're always ready to answer the call, whether it's choking, or a heart attack, or a kitchen fire, or no matter what it is, the San Rafael Fire Department is there to help, and they always do the job in the best possible way. Also, as Chris Gray, our chief, says, "Big fires start small," and when we have a wildland fire, we attempt to jump on it quickly, and if needed, we also get mutual aid from our neighbors, or cal fire, to keep it small. The distinction that I wanted to make is between the item that's on the- The distinction that I wanted to make is between the item that's on the agenda later tonight on Regional Wildfire JPA, is that that's taking that further and the kind of the day-to-day calls that we get that I was describing, and improving our ability to respond in the event of a, or, and prevent a wildfire that we haven't historically had the resources to do on this kind of large regional scale that we're talking about tonight. And I think we've seen over the past couple of years how important it is to be thinking about wildfire from a regional standpoint and not just from a municipal standpoint. So, when it comes to fuel reduction, improving emergency alert or warning systems, coordinated evacuation planning, or improving routes for evacuation, creating defensible space, those are all the things that both Chief Gray and also the chiefs throughout Marin County are telling us that we need to do to make a difference when it comes to wildfire safety. And then on the housing item, being the, you know, the largest city in the county seat, looking at what we can do to make sure that we're doing our share to be able to build housing for people like our own employees who would like to live closer to where they work, or our businesses in San Rafael that employees would like to live closer, Kaiser, BioMarin, all of the different businesses that we have. So, on that item, staff's attempted to lay out all of the issues around constraints and challenges that relates to housing production, and then also talk about some proposed solutions and recommendations. So, I bring that up here because at first glance, it might look on our agenda because they're both items informational reports, and there aren't resolutions or ordinances or new laws attached to them. But I wanted to call them out because I think they're, they're just as important because it's a very crucial stage of the process. Both of those things will be coming back to you at, at future points. The wildfire item will be coming back as soon as next month, as we talk about JPA agreement. And then housing, once we have a chance to work with our community as well, will be coming back. So, even though it may not look like much action is happening this evening, it's a lot of really important background policy work that I think we're intending to have tonight so that we can bring these things forward for, for approvals and recommendations and more direction going forward. And then lastly, Mayor, you asked me to comment on the, on the questions that came up around Baypoint. There was quite a bit of email traffic going on over this Labor Day weekend between our police department and fire department and me and Public Works, all of the different issues actually that came up tonight. So, I'm more than happy to get back. I know we have contact information. I know that we've, we've been in contact with folks already and continue those, continue the conversation and provide updates. It sounds to me like we're making progress in these areas, particularly the ones that were mentioned in the canal ways and what we can do to reduce the risk of wildfire in that area. But because of the number of them, I think I'd like to get together with the people that have commented tonight and any other representatives from the neighborhood and just kind of go through all of them so they can get all their questions answered.
I think that's an excellent approach, and thanks for doing so, and thanks for your report. Obviously, it's a concern to a great number of individuals, so I think we need to be responsive. I'd just like to comment, and you might have to put the two minutes on me, but a little out of the, out of the, the normal block of city manager's report, but there are a couple of things I feel compelled to, to just touch on. They are, one, the outreach the police department is going to be having, as Jim mentioned earlier on, is it three or four occasions? Four occasions. Then I want to talk for a moment about flag. I want to talk also about SMART, because I know it's on a lot of people's minds, and I'm going to make it real short, so I apologize for that, but it's frankly, I'm a little bit out of order. First, with regard to the police, that was a request that I had made some time ago. First, let me, let me underscore that our police department is fantastic. They are truly excellent people, absolutely professionals in what they do. I have no, I don't receive negative comments regarding our police department. We're very, very fortunate as a community to have such an outstanding department. But it struck me in thinking about the relationship between the police department and the citizenry, and that is, there's some discretion. We each, each city has its own police department, and, and it's not uniform in terms of how one might enforce various municipal codes, et cetera, et cetera. And so, it seemed to me that we, as a community, perhaps weren't doing our job to assist the, the department to better understand what the expectation is of us. You know, they go out and they do their thing, and again, they do it in an outstanding way, I would suggest, without exception, but it seemed to me that we should do more, we as a community should do more, to help them understand where our priorities are and have an open discussion about, about those and the application of some of the enforcement provisions. So, that'll be an opportunity for us as a community to help our department and make sure we're all in sync. I think we are for the most part, but let's, let's help our officers know what the expectation is of the community. So, that's, that's the reason I've asked for that. Second, most of you probably know that Chief Gray requested of me, as he does repeatedly, rightfully so, to lower the flags, and this was a couple of weeks ago, as you probably recall, and I said, "Yes, let's do that." Presidential order, and so, for good reason, we lowered the flag, but I was not happy with the fact that we repeatedly lower the flag and then four or five days later raise it, and then everybody goes on their merry way. I, I'd had it with that, that cycle, if you will. And informed the chief that, yes, lower the flag, but don't reinstate it until we at least saw, as a community, saw some evidence of discussion move, but hopefully by Congress. I don't know if I was on solid ground there, quite frankly, but it seemed like the right thing to do for me. And unfortunately, I was going on vacation, long planned vacation out of the country the week after, and so it was like, okay, how do I reinstate the flag if something happens because we're pretty much incognito? And, and it didn't seem fair to drop that, that requirement obligation or decision, if you will, upon the city manager and Andrew, her city vice mayor at the time, or at that time, and that's continuing. In any case, adopt that decision on them to reinstate. That didn't seem right to me, so I said, "Okay, let's bring it back up." It continues to be a problem since that date, which was just a few weeks ago, there have been thirty-five individuals killed, one hundred and fifteen injured with twenty-six mass shootings. And I'll tell you, I would lower that flag for that seventeen-year-old little girl that got shot in the face, who was up to me. So, I'm a little bit perturbed that there hasn't been more action taken, and we are going to review our ordinances and some things perhaps we can do to step up on the sixteenth of this, of this month. So, I would, I would certainly welcome anyone that has an interest to, to attend that. Way past due. Next, with regard to SMART, perhaps some of you know that I'm a little bit involved with SMART, having been the president of the Board of Directors, and it makes an interesting position that I find myself, particularly recently with the opening of, potential opening of the extension to Larksburg. To do so, FRA, the Federal Railroad Administration, requires a certain amount of verification that the intersections, the at-grade intersections, second, third, and on, are, quote, "safe." How do you, how do you establish that they're safe? Well, you run a number of tests, and you're all aware of that. In fact, I, someone sent me a video of the very first crossing of Second, and I thought it was kind of interesting that I was watching it, watching it, the train went through, the lights were flashing, the arms were down, of course, the train went through, and then I thought, geez, the arms are still down, I'm going to time this thing, and before the video was over, the arms were still down. And, and as in one example of testing that needs to take place, so that the, the program itself, under which the train operates, can be modified, and I mentioned to someone, I think it was John, actually, that this is not an Excel program. SMART, we spent fifty million dollars establishing the positive train control. It's the first in the country, but it's a very involved thing, and, and so I know that testing is required, so the question is, when do you do that? Normal operations run, let's call it till ten o'clock, not exactly, but roughly ten o'clock in San Rafael, and so, the, the program itself won't allow for simultaneously running the commercial service and then the testing. That is the nature of the beast that I've been told, and I'm assuming that it's correct. So, therefore, the initial was, we're going to have to test in the after-normal operations, which is really a pain in the neck for a lot of people. And I've received a lot of emails, as you can well imagine, because it runs well into the evening, as it did this past three-day period and then the Friday before that, so it's, I know it's, it's a royal pain. In any case, I want to, I'm going to just share with you quickly something that I have sent to a number of those that inquired about the, the matter, and I, I've said, "I wish we had an alternative," but to provide a permanent quiet zone, which we'll have, and we've applied for that, we being the city's applied for the quiet zone, FRA gives approval after, after the application, after testing, et cetera. So, we've applied for it, but it's FRA that grants it. So, in any case, we'll have a permanent quiet zone to Larksburg. The FRA requires testing period, during which time the train is required to sound its horn at each crossing, to assure the train will be able to operate safely upon commencing passenger service. Also, this test period cannot coincide with the current operating schedule, and therefore testing must be performed in the evening and early morning. We have, we have insisted the test period be as short as possible to receive FRA's safety approval for the new road crossings to get to Larksburg. Please refer to the website, it's SMART's website, wherein they will specify the days of testing, which I believe the next will be Friday. Having said that, we have a, a regular board meeting tomorrow at one thirty in Petaluma. I will chair that board meeting, but before that board meeting, I've made it very clear to the general manager, I want to, I want a report that specifically outlines this testing program as to where it stands now, because now we've had four days of testing, one day and then three. And where do we stand? Where do we stand with regard to the completion? And so, I'll be able to communicate that with the, the community, because I know the community is, is rightly upset about this. I would be too. And so, we'll get back on that. Also, I'm going to ask whether or not there are any other arrangements that can be made, perhaps where we could tail service. You know, I don't know, but we're going to explore, explore all opportunities, because I've received, rightfully so, a number of criticisms with regard to this program that's keeping people up late at night, and so I apologize for that. Obviously, the question preceding is, do we want quiet zones or not for the next X number of years, twenty years? Yes, certainly we do. Otherwise, you're going to be disturbed, you know, throughout the day, each day, every, you know, every day for an foreseeable future. So, we want a quiet zone, and this may be the price we have to pay. FRA clearly establishes what the rules are. It's not the City of San Rafael. It's not SMART either, quite frankly. FRA is the one that says, "Okay, you pass muster, or no, you don't." And like I said, you have to go back and test and reprogram and test and get it just right, because they're not tolerant, because it's probably obvious to all of us, if you're in the tracks, when that train comes through, you're dead. It's that simple. That train is not going to stop. Can't. It'll slow down and eventually stop, but not, not while you're on the tracks, if there's not forewarning. So, it's something from a safety standpoint that we, as a community, insist upon, and certainly SMART is complying with, but there's a, there's an uncomfortable period, and I apologize once again for, for that on behalf of myself as the chair of SMART, SMART and not so much San Rafael, because we have real little say about the testing program. So, I will, sorry about taking your time, I'm probably over two minutes, but thanks for, thanks for hearing me out on, on those three points. We'll now turn to the consent calendar and start, I would like to, and John, I hope you heard, we're going to table item C, alarm ordinance adoption, and bring it back after we've done some additional things to get it organized, assuming that's okay with my fellow council members. Is there a motion to, one, table this item?
I, I move that we table the item C, alarm ordinance adoption to a date.
Thank you.
And second.
And second, take a roll call on that first, and then we'll go to the items themselves.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Collins.
Aye.
Councilmember Gamblin.
Aye.
Vice Mayor McCullough.
Aye.
Mayor Phillips.
I, Mayor Kerry's five zero will now turn to the remaining items for A, with the exception of C through F. Anyone wish to comment on any of these items before we take action? Seeing no public input, we'll come back. Motion or comment, if there is. If not, a motion would be in order.
All right. I move passage of the balance of the consent calendar.
Second.
Moving second, roll call please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Collins.
Aye.
Councilmember Gamblin.
Aye.
Vice Mayor McCullough.
Aye.
Mayor Phillips.
I, Mayor Kerry's five zero. We now have a special presentation, Proclamation National Preparedness Month. Join me. Quinn, I was going to ask you to come up. You beat me to the punch. I know, you're, you're the best, you're the best. So, National Preparedness Month, two thousand and nineteen. I've got a whole bunch of warehouses, et cetera, et cetera. I'm glad to read those, but maybe you can just tell us about them.
Yes, let's do that. So, September is always National Preparedness Month, which is a national effort to help everybody get prepared for disaster. This year's theme is Prepared, Not Scared, and I think that's something we've been pushing for over a year now, and the more that we can do as a community to be prepared, the less scared we have to be and the less things we have to fear. And so, there's a couple of things we'll be doing this month. As always, we've got one hour to get ready classes. They're on the city's website. Encourage everybody to come, spend an hour, learn what you can do to be prepared, so you aren't scared. We're also going to be doing some internal training with staff to better make sure all of our systems, I like to use September as a time that we test everything internally to make sure we're ready to go to take care of our community. So, appreciate the mayor and council recognizing National Preparedness Month.
Well, thank you. And since you've covered all the points, I won't recite them. Why don't you say hi to our friends over here? We'll now go on to item six, of which we have three items, starting with regional fire prevention. Welcome, Chief.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, ladies and gentlemen. I can't tell you how pleased and proud I am to be here tonight, particularly in light of the, the subject matter. This is a game changer, and in our continued quest of your direction to be bold regarding wildfire prevention and preparedness, it is with my full support that we bring forth a significant regional opportunity toward creating the Marin Wildfire Prevention Authority and recommending accepting our report and provide further direction. We're joined tonight by, of course, our San Rafael Emergency Manager Quinn Gardner, Marin County Fire Chief Jason Weber, Nevada Fire District Fire Chief, and Marin County Fire Chiefs Association President Bill Tyler, and to my left, Marin County Battalion Chief Kristi Neal, who oversees vegetation and fuels management for Marin County Fire. I believe Supervisor Katie Rice is also with us here tonight. The Marin Wildfire Prevention Authority is proposed as a multi-agency authority to fund, coordinate, and oversee wildland fire detection, fuel reduction, public education, defensible space evaluations, and local agency wildfire prevention efforts. Think Open Space Rangers regarding that. Over the past ten years, your fire departments in Marin have created a virtually seamless, unified response to send the closest available appropriate resource regardless of jurisdictional boundaries. It's more efficient and effective. It saves lives. The proposed MWPA takes us a step further, and it's a very unique step and a significant one, I'll say, in the state of California, to regionally coordinate fire prevention efforts. It's a force multiplier that will significantly enhance our ability to become more wildfire-resistant, a sustainable and resilient community. The resources and synergy available through participation in this regional prevention partnership are beyond anything we could muster locally with wildfire prevention and will complement all of our local efforts. This is a significant undertaking with far-reaching objectives and wide-ranging benefits, and I'm confident that the creation and implementation of the authority will dramatically increase both San Rafael community and firefighter wildfire safety. This is clearly example of where together we are better. And for any firefighter worth their salt, they'll tell you that the best call is the one that doesn't occur through education and prevention, and to me, this is the right call to make. We'd like to start additional presentation here with Chief Neal, and we're going to start with a video, and then I'd like to ask Chief Jason Weber to speak a little bit about the background of the authority and, and our consolidated efforts to date, which have included a wide range of elected officials, appointed officials, and city managers and fire chiefs from throughout Marin County. Chief Neal. Chief Neal.
Wildfires are bigger, burn longer, cause more damage, and kill more people than ever before. During the fire siege of 2017, when our friends to the north experienced that disaster, Marin was just one ignition source away from that occurring. We have the same fuel conditions, same weather, and same topography that drove that fire that night.
Wildfire risk is now a constant threat in California, especially in communities like Marin, with lush vegetation and development near significant areas of natural open space. Marin's natural beauty and abundant undeveloped lands are considered source fuel for a potentially devastating and fatal wildfire, similar to the ones that have ravaged Sonoma, Napa, Lake Counties, and Paradise over the past few years. Many Marin neighborhoods are adjacent to wildlands because of a strong desire to live close to nature. Recent fire seasons have been longer, hotter, and among the deadliest and most destructive on record. The 260,000 residents of Marin receive fire protection and emergency response services from 19 separate cities, towns, fire districts, and the county, but there is no single agency responsible for coordinating wildfire prevention.
The threat of large destructive wildfires in Marin is real, and one of the most important lessons is that a fast-moving wildfire doesn't care about jurisdictional boundaries, but a coordinated, large-scale effort to improve prevention and safety can make a difference, can save lives and property.
In response to the need for coordinated action to reduce wildfire risk in Marin, local fire agencies and municipal governments have proposed creation of a new joint powers authority, the Marin Wildfire Prevention Authority. The new authority's mission would be to improve and oversee programs in early wildfire detection, improved alert and warning systems, resident evacuations, vegetation management, and fire hazard reduction, defensible space property evaluations, educating the public about wildfire safety, and more.
This new fire prevention and mitigation program is designed to be in addition to, not in replacement, of the current fire prevention efforts currently in place in our Marin communities. The program is designed to bring all of Marin neighborhoods up to a defensible space standard to minimize loss from large damaging wildfires while also allowing flexibility to address local needs. For example, some communities have local fire issues related to the need for improved fire patrols, road widening, increasing the vegetation removal along critical evacuation routes.
Some local community issues that can be addressed, for one, is improving your primary and secondary evacuation routes from your neighborhood. Many communities within Marin only have one way in and one way out. How we improve that is by removing hazardous vegetation that's located along the roadsides. A second issue to address would be improved defensible space inspection program. How that is involved is by allowing a cadre of inspectors to come into our community and to be able to consistently inspect every single property and give recommendations on how you can prepare your home to become more fire safe.
Currently, no dedicated source of funding exists for wildfire prevention and preparedness in Marin. Options for securing a dedicated funding source are being evaluated, including placing a local funding measure on the ballot in 2020 for voters to consider. It is estimated that approximately $20 million per year is needed to implement an effective coordinated wildfire prevention program.
We've been lucky to avoid a major wildfire in Marin County, but luck is not a strategy. We need a good plan to make ourselves safer. Research and just plain common sense point out the need to have a coordinated countywide wildfire prevention effort. It's been a long time coming, but I'm very excited to see all this come together.
In the coming months, cities, towns, and local fire agencies will have the opportunity to join the Marin Wildfire Prevention Authority, and decisions will be made about securing dedicated funding for the authority's programs. To stay informed, please visit www.marinwildfire.org.
Chief Tyler.
Evening, Chief, thanks for joining us.
Thank you, and good evening. Mayor Phillips, thank you very much for allowing us to come and provide this information, council members. We certainly do appreciate the leadership that you've shown as an elected official in this arena and for giving the authority of your chief to come forward with bold plans, and that's what I think we have for you today as well. How did we get here? 2017 and 2018 saw the most destructive fire seasons on record. Fire seasons are now longer, about 84 days longer since the 1970s, and Marin County has fuel and vegetation that can support high-intensity, fast-moving, and damaging fires. We have a strong mutual aid system of fire agencies here in Marin, over 19 agencies that are staffed to respond to all hazards and emergency events. With regards to pre-fire plan and prevention work, the demands are exceeding the capacity, frankly, to respond to the level needed for fire education and prevention and inspections and consulting. So the problem, we think, is likely to get worse in the future with the warming climate, with denser forests and vegetations, and more humid ignitions. This is an image that was a part of the Community Wildfire Protection Plan, and it basically shows a very hot, typical, dry day, above 85 degrees with low relative humidity, a southwest wind. And what I want to point out is, of all the colors that are there, they represent the flame lengths that are anticipated off the vegetation. And what's important to know that is that in order for firefighters to do a direct attack, which is to put firefighters in front of the fire, those flame lengths cannot be higher than that four to eight range, which is your green color. So you can see how much of the area of Marin really is going to require us to do indirect attack and rely on dozers and aircraft to help extinguish those fires on those particular days. What's also interesting is the insurance losses are rising. The losses are increasing, and residents are losing their homeowner's insurance due to the increased overgrowth of vegetation. Statewide, non-renewals have increased by 6% last year. It's about 88,000 homeowners have had to find other coverage. Around 80,000 have dropped in populous urban areas. Coverage has increased 50% more in those high-risk zones. Over 340,000 homes have dropped their coverage in rural areas in the last four years. As a result of the North Bay fires, 74% of all of those homeowners were underinsured for that fire. It's about $500 per square foot required in Sonoma County. You can anticipate much higher levels here in Marin County. I want to talk about the core documents that went together to support these initiatives. The first is the Community Wildfire Protection Plan, which was adopted by the Board of Supervisors in 2016. This document is scientific-based, and it was used to help us determine what our levels of risk were within the county. It used mapping and also fire modeling to demonstrate to us for the first time just how devastating these fires can be, and it came up with a series of recommendations and goals that were then shared with all of the different fire agencies that we could begin to work on mitigating those hazards. The document also prioritized projects to protect our communities, but funding is something that needs to be provided in order for the individual jurisdictions and agencies to make a difference. The second document was commissioned by the Board of Supervisors immediately following the fires that occurred in Santa Rosa, in Napa, and also Lake Counties. This is known as the Lessons Learned Report. Basically, we convened a number of public officials from Marin County, or excuse me, from Sonoma County that experienced the Tubbs Fire, and we asked them, what did they have in place? What was missing? What did they feel like they should have done? And then we took a deep dive into what we're doing here in Marin County and developed a gap analysis to figure out what was missing and what did we need to put into play. From that, there were over 24 recommendations for the fire agencies alone to begin working on, as well as initiatives for both law enforcement, Office of Emergency Services, major landowners, et cetera, and the public. The Fire Chiefs Association got to work with the committee, and we began to address those 24 gaps, and we came forward with a series of initiatives that we thought would be important. Once we looked at what those initiatives were, and we began to put a plan together. The third document that was so important is the Grand Jury Independent Analysis. So the Grand Jury took a look at what they felt were the risks, did a ton of analysis and interviews, and they identified at the end that there was a new approach that was needed. We needed to address these gaps in preparedness, and it recommended a new funding source, a sales tax, and also a joint powers authority to deal with this. So we are proposing to have a Marin Wildfire Prevention Authority. It's a combination of local fire agencies and also emergency services providers. It's cities and towns and also the county working together as a single joint powers authority for comprehensive wildfire prevention and emergency preparedness. There are basically six functional areas that this JPA will address. The first four are what we're considering, the core initiatives. So that's the breakdown here, so you can see, and you'll see this slide again later with the fund amounts attributed to them, but about 60% of all of the activities are focusing around what are called JPA Core. And then there are two other functional areas, defensible space evaluation and home hardening, which is about 20%, and then local wildfire prevention mitigation issues is another 20%. And I'll go into more detail about each one of these areas now. The first area in the core has to do with wildfire detection and evacuation program improvements. This is the number-one concern of all citizens in Marin County. Am I going to receive proper notification? How am I going to get out if I actually need to? So we intend to add improvements to that early detection and warning. We believe that there needs to be a study done to evacuate all of the areas and cities and towns of Marin, so that we can have an organized, coordinated evacuation and planning effort. Once we identify where those choke points are on roadways, we can better learn to be able to apply funding specifically to those projects to reduce that hazard immediately. We want to improve evacuation routes and infrastructure for organized evacuations. Some of these other things that can help with evacuations are like contraflow, so turning, you know, one-way or two-way roads in opposite directions, both in the same direction. Also, study mass vehicle movement, early detection improvements, for example, the high-definition cameras that have been recently installed and expanded throughout the county. Also, new LRAD, which is the Long Range Acoustical Device that some communities are interested in pursuing. There's also hazard notification devices and drills that need to be conducted, and mapping enhancements, and a focus on temporary areas of refuge. The next core area has to do with vegetation reduction, and this is reducing combustible plants and vegetation. There's protecting critical infrastructure is an important focus. We would intend to use fire and fuels crews, or equipment, or goat grazing, or perhaps even prescribed burning, using sound environmental resources, and we would apply the right treatment to the right area. Not every area is good for goats to work in, not every area is good for fire and fuels crews. So we would want to apply the most efficient resource with available funds. But high priority work has been identified in the Community Wildfire Protection Plan by each one of those agencies. A couple of images here of the goats and the crews working in the field, as well as chipper days and working with the community to try and reduce these hazards. This is a great example of what coordinated prevention can look like. If you, I know it's sort of hard to see here, but right in the center of the map is Sleepy Hollow. The yellow areas that you see along the ridge lines and across strategic are fuel breaks and shaded fuel breaks. Those are designed to slow a fire as it moves from one community into the other, and that other community on the other side happens to be San Rafael. So you can see the work that's being done in the San Rafael site, the work along the ridge lines, the work along Sleepy Hollow, all work together to try and slow that fire and give our crews a chance to get in and protect homes and property. Just so you get an idea of cost, it was about $600,000 for 600 acres, or $900 per acre to graze to get that work done. The next core function is the public education and outreach, which is critical. You know, the fear is very high for the public on these areas, their understanding is very low, and so this education is meant to close the gap in understanding. One good example of this is a resource magazine that was recently made available to all of the fire agencies. Some fire agencies chose to have this direct mailed out to their residents, others are distributing it in other methods, but this has a companion presentation called Living with Fire that's being made available across the county. It's comprehensive for the public, and this is an example of the great work and partnership that can be done with Fire Safe Marin and with these grants. So that is the core area of responsibilities. Now we're going to talk about the two other functional areas. This has to do with defensible space management, home evaluations and inspections, and home hardening. So this would give an opportunity for agencies to either go with seasonal fire inspectors, a cadre that could be spread out across all of the regional areas to do uniform inspections, or it also gives the opportunity for local agencies to perform this function on their own. And so it also involves grants for low-income seniors, matching funds that will help create an incentive for members of the public to do the cleaning in their own yards, which can best help their home survive. And then lastly, is the ability under the JPA to address specific local needs. And you heard Chief Gray earlier talk about, this is really important. This is where agencies can tackle those specific problems, like the fear and concern of the homeless encampment-caused fires. It might be creating parking boxes on the roadways to help folks know where they can and can't park, and then help with enforcement. So on those hot fire weather days where engines need to be able to get in and out effectively, making sure that people aren't blocking or slowing that access. It can also help with home hardening, with matching grants, so that if they've got combustible roofs, or decks, or eaves, or vents, they can replace those with ignition-resistant construction. So now I'd like to invite Chief Weber up. He's going to talk about how the money and revenue would be received and how it would be allocated.
Thank you, Chief, welcome, Chief.
Mayor, council members, thank you, Jason Weber, County Fire and Ross Valley Fire Chief. I apologize, I'll try not to cough. My four kids went back to school and brought some great stuff home this last week with them. So a little bit about the overview. We mentioned the need for $20 million, and, you know, that doesn't fill the gap completely. We still need to be aggressive in our pursuits of federal and state grants, and use this to champion those and take the dollar further. A stable local source of controlled funding for those that were frustrated outside of the city limits here, but by the SRA fee that was paid about $178, was going back to the state. That was frustrating and challenging. This is about supplementing and not supplanting. Potential countywide tax measures, as we mentioned, for March, depending on the outcome of the meetings we're having for the next six weeks here. Requires two-thirds support countywide. And a recent survey, which I'll cover in a moment, you know, I think indicates two things, one of which, like we're hearing tonight, there's a lot of need and our resources are limited, and we're trying to fill that, but also from a fire professional standpoint, it's frustrating not being able to do some of these things that we know need to be done. And I'm sure you experienced that also on the council. And then ongoing versus one-time funding. Right now, we're grant-dependent on a lot of these projects, which means we're not as strategic as we should be in our approach. The intention here would be, we would augment with grant funds, but be very strategic in our approach, and not stop at a boundary or fence line or a property line because of the agency that has jurisdiction, if you will. And then a long-term funding stream, you know, for maintenance, deal with issues like climate change, that, you know, this vegetation grows back. We have a project in the greater Ross Valley, 55 miles of roadways. It's about $1 million to treat, or roughly $18,000 a road mile, and it's going to have to be retreated. So it gives you an idea of concept of the cost of some of these things. That's using contractors. Chief Tyler mentioned the programs and the estimated costs, so we look at that JPA core of about $12 million spread throughout. I think one of the keys here is that it's generation of local dollars and the use of local dollars. I personally, and I think others, feel that when someone opens their door or their window in the morning, they should see work occurring right there around them. And that was a primary goal as we started working through the JPA. Certainly was something that San Rafael, the voices brought to the table in consideration. And those areas covered, I'm not going to repeat what Bill already talked about. The defensible space evaluations are roughly $4 million committed to that program, and then local wildfire mitigation, around $4 million. And this is to enhance and expedite local issues. San Rafael has some specific issues with homeless encampments and other things that need to be addressed in a faster manner, to allow a local agency to do that. I talked about the voter support. So we polled three different options when we went out to discuss this with the community before we moved forward, and those were an 11 cents per square foot assessment, $178 per parcel assessment, and a quarter cent sales tax. That red line you see at 66 and two-thirds is the supermajority needed by So we polled three different options when we went out to discuss this with the community before we moved forward. And those were an eleven cents per square foot assessment, a hundred and seventy-eight dollar per parcel assessment, and a quarter cent sales tax. That red line you see at sixty-six and two-thirds is the supermajority needed by the voters to pass. Both the eleven cents and the hundred and seventy-eight parcel meet that, but far and above the eleven cents per square foot was viewed favorably across the county. And I think that was also the case here in San Rafael. The quarter cent sales tax didn't meet the two-thirds threshold, and there are other compounding issues, a decision that we're recommending steering away from. Here's some specific data for the city of San Rafael. I think I misspoke just a second ago. Corrected by data. We're doing a lot of these presentations. So again, I think it's just over, around seventy-three percent for the eleven cents. The hundred and seventy-eight per parcel did a little better. I suspect that's because of the house sizes here in San Rafael. And people were thinking through that when the assessment. But again, we're looking at this as countywide data. Some of the mandatory fiscal accountability pieces. All funds must stay local, can't be taken by the state. The funds must be used for wildland fire prevention efforts. Independent oversights, annual reporting and financial audits. That includes goals and objectives in reports, looking back and also looking forward. Exemptions for low-income seniors. And then this is, I talked about this a little bit, but again, to help us qualify for state and federal grants using matching funds. A lot of those grants come down at the last minute from the legislator. It's kind of a surprise. And if shovel-ready projects aren't there, we often lose out on those funds. So a little bit about how we've come to try to find balance here. You know, allow for local control, but really try to force consensus. Understanding that fire knows no boundaries. The county was broken up into five geographical areas. The far right, the green area being Nevada, essentially Nevada Fire District. The red area being San Rafael, including the county service areas as well as Marinwood. Then the purplish color takes you through the Ross Valley, Fairfax to Corder Madera. The green being our southern Marin, and up over the hill into Mere Woods. And then the pinker area on the coast is your county unincorporated areas and fire districts on the coast. So we went through many iterations of what we thought would be the most effective board, and with weight, and is it one member, one vote? Is it, you know, a smaller number, a smaller group that can work, you know, a little bit more detail? We landed on the five areas, two members from each of those, and then one representing small districts. So in the case of San Rafael, that would give you, you know, two votes on the board, as well as, and I'm going to talk about the structure below that in a minute, so I won't jump ahead. But I think one of the keys here is agencies will maintain independent local control. So if you have a code or a policy that you set here, work you're doing on your wildland fire plan, this is to enhance and help you with that. It's not to come in and dictate what needs to be done in the city of San Rafael. So a little bit about how this looks. An elected group of eleven members at the top, representing those five geographical areas and one for small districts. Immediately below that is an operations or budget committee. And the intention here is, this is balanced in the same way as the top, so recommendations aren't coming up to the board that are now out of balance from what we tried to achieve with the overall governance. And then this would be, for example, as an example, the city manager and the fire chief representing San Rafael at this level. So these are appointed officials, not elected officials. That would be at the top. And then the advisory committee, each member, member agency would have a vote on that. As well as, this is where we bring in our partners like the County Open Space, or Marin Municipal Water District, P G N E, law enforcement. So we're having a discussion at the table, how to achieve these common goals collectively. That doesn't mean we're paying and supplanting for a public land management agency. It means we're bringing state parks, for example, to the table, and looking at projects that have mutual benefit, where the city is threatened by a park that's adjacent to. How do we capitalize on, you know, either their lack of staff or lack of funding to achieve these projects? But they've got to be at the table having those conversations. And then I think we've covered why the JPA. You know, as Chief Gray mentioned, we do things very well together when the bell goes off and there's a fire. We're not doing that same level of, there's not that same level of collaboration in the pre-fire world. Why twenty million dollars? We gave you a few examples of the magnitude of these projects and the cost of contractors. I think if anybody's had any tree work done, they know how expensive this work is. And there's a, and it grows back. And then how are the land management agencies incorporated? I think I discussed that. So a little bit about the timeline and next steps. As mentioned, we're out doing informational programs now. The intention is to get your feedback as board and councils, the public's feedback, and incorporate that into any changes we need to make before we come and see you again, ask you to make a decision one way or another. That would be in September and October. And then November, ultimately, if the agencies choose, that would be placed on the ballot by the Board of Supervisors on a countywide level. And then again, March of 2020 for a possible election. Now, we're flying pretty high as we discuss this tonight, and certainly happy to come back and meet and get deeper into the weeds. But we also want to be respectful of your time tonight. As mentioned, the Marin wildfire.org, so take off the S on there, is available. The draft JPA is available for the public to look at. Most of the working documents and FAQs are on there. And we encourage the public to visit that site and provide feedback.
Mayor, that concludes our prepared remarks. And we're available to answer any questions of the council and/or the community that you may have. And again, recommend acceptance of our report. And that will be back to you in October with further information and a JPA.
And certainly thank, thank you, Chief Chief and Chief, for your fine presentation. I suspect there are some questions of council, and then of course, we'll open to public. Any questions of council, John?
I'll start out. Thank you all for the quality of the report and the information in there. And I don't think there's anyone up here or in the audience that doesn't believe that we have issues that we need to address. And you brought, in the beginning of your presentation, Chief Gray, that we do things much better together when we're working as a unit rather than as individual parts. And that, it might be a little bit off-topic, but the question is, is this the most efficient way to handle this by creating another named JPA with another funding source, another set of board of directors, be it appointed, electeds or not? Or is there a, is there a better way to address this in Marin County? I did just a little back-of-the-napkin calculations, and you can correct me on these numbers, because I'm sure they're not absolutely correct. But just about, the population of Marin County in 2018, 2019 is around two-hundred-and-sixty thousand. We have, according to the report, twelve major participating agencies, but nineteen total agencies in here for two-hundred-and-sixty thousand people. Alameda County has one-point-seven million people, and they have about eight. Contra Costa has about one-point-two million people, and they have nine districts. And what they've done over the last number of years is they've consolidated districts and become a little bit more efficient with this. We see this in our school districts, we see this in this. And I'm wondering, do we create another agency and fund it separately? Or are we, and don't look at what others are doing? And are they less efficient than what this is, or are they more efficient than what this? I know that's kind of a roundabout question, but the numbers are pretty stark when it comes to the number of agencies, separate agencies with separate bureaucracies, separate payrolls, everything, compared to what our neighbors are doing. And we're asking the public to put, you know, in my case, another two-hundred-and-twenty-one dollars a year onto my property tax to fund something, and is that the most efficient way to do that? I know that's, might be a little bit off-topic, but that's the concern that I have. Please.
Mayor and Councilmember Gamblin, excellent question and one I asked myself. And interestingly enough, I see the potential of this regional agency actually as a precursor to a larger, more efficient agency countywide for fire services. I think that's what we're building here potentially, is the framework of something much larger and more efficient. You'll recall that within the last two years, Larkspur and Corder Madera formed, eliminated a fire chief, and formed a single fire department. Within the last year, the Marinwood Fire Department's fire chief retired. We're now providing that service. Jason Weber mentioned that he also serves as the Ross Valley Fire Chief. So I think we're coming up with a perfect arrangement. And this is just another factor, and it very well may be the organization of the future. We're in the midst of discussions with Marin LaFco, and an operational area that potentially is looking at the county service areas, the community service district in the city of San Rafael, and to possibly forming a district. I think all of these need to be taken into account, that they're timely and they're relevant. But I, honestly, I don't know of a better solution to address this problem that we have today. And going forward, I think your comments are important and they're valued. We do have some unique issues here, but we also know that the fire service in terms of suppression is probably the most transportable of all. I mean, we rush up and down the state to go assist other agencies, but after the fire. We're doing nothing together before the fire. And that's where we need the stability that I think this authority will provide in order to do that. And my hope is that I think we can grow it to provide other services.
And thank you for that. And I didn't see it in the initial thing, and maybe I missed it, but the terms of the proposal, because no one wants to have a tax in this case, and then come back five years from now. We're already seeing that a lot. And it doesn't, it doesn't provide for adequate funding that way and be able to plan. So I would assume that the initial ideas are ten, twenty, thirty-year term or unlimited term on this, to fund this. And I don't know of the mechanics around that, but if this leads to a broader agency, you know, if that's our direction, should we be going for this thirty, twenty, thirty-year tax if that's, you know?
And maybe to add to that, think about it as from the perspective of we were going to go this alone, and would likely be recommending a similar tax. It would not have the benefits and the breadth and depth of the larger organization. And we wouldn't be able to do honestly nearly as much. And so that's part of, I think, the, you know, the opportunity and the conundrum that we're in the midst of. While we're trying to reduce, I think, the number of districts and JPAs and single organizations, we're also trying to eliminate islands and converge where we can all work together to address this problem, which is far bigger than any one of us individually.
Mayor, I'm sorry, okay. Mayor, no, no. Okay?
Yep. So I've been fortunate enough to be the San Rafael representative to Marin Ready Together, which is the elected official group that has been also weighing in and providing input. And a big shout-out to Supervisor Rice, who's been convening that group on a monthly basis for the last five months, six months. The chiefs have been there, giving the information, and all the cities and towns have been at the table as well. So it is fabulous to see this cross-jurisdictional conversation and work going forward. So my question is actually probably more in the weeds, but more just putting it out there for as you go through and as we start to finalize. Having to do with JPA, there's always been a big discussion about making sure that they're very transparent. So it's just putting a little thought out there that we, that assuming this does go forward and it does get approved by our community, there's an aspect to, there's a way to videotape, have people see what those meetings are, letting the public come and weigh in, because it is really important. And people aren't going to want to be on the outside of that. They're going to want to be raising their hand, saying, hey, what about my neighborhood? And giving input and having that forum to do it, so that's just one thing. And then the second, being that this is being looked at as a long-term approach, as we get into it, let's say, ten or fifteen years down the line, is there a mechanism, if there's any tinkering that is needed? I don't even know what that would look like, because we haven't even started that so far in the future. But making sure that whatever is created, that there is some flexibility there that we can respond to changing conditions, so it's more input than questions. Thank you.
I'll address myself to all of the chiefs. I assume that there is an amount of overhead associated with running this JPA, once, assuming it's formed, and once it's formed. Can you roughly project out what percentage of the twenty million that's estimated to be brought in in the form of tax revenue would go towards supporting the overhead of the JPA?
Thank you, and there's certainly sensitivity to that as we had these discussions. The twelve-million-dollar figure, which was the core function program, has a cap of not to exceed ten percent, so that would be one-point-two million dollars. We thought that was reasonable. It's probably light, but will force us to be as efficient as possible and ensure that ninety percent of the funds are going to actually physically, physical work.
And then sort of a corollary to that. I realize that, let's just speak parochially here, that San Rafael has representation on the board, so it has some influence over the direction of the JPA. But how does any one jurisdiction, San Rafael in particular, ensure that its share of the revenues that are taken from San Rafael households come back to benefit its community? I recognize that twenty percent goes to the local jurisdictions, but of the other eighty percent, how do we ensure that there's an equitable distribution of those resources so that communities who contribute get back in a prorata fashion?
Absolutely. So if you go to the map that has the five geographical areas, the intention is to prioritize things in those operational areas. So we're maximizing the local dollars. But also to take into account that if something happens on the ridge between Kenfield and San Rafael, that communication needs to be there and the projects need to be prioritized. So out of the sixty percent, when you look at that pot, if you will, things like funding Fire Safe Marin, well, there'll be, inherently, there will be a return on investment because of the size of their population with community education, outreach, et cetera. Goats are funded through that. The emergency alert and warning systems, a lot of this is technology-driven. Again, it's supporting sixty thousand residents inherently that will be returned. And then when you get down into the vegetation management projects specifically, again, they'll be prioritized within the San Rafael-Marinwood County area by those cooperators. And therefore, you know, the funds will be returned in those projects. So I think it is certainly safe to say that the funds will be returned. But understanding this is kind of tragedy of the commons. If you didn't make that investment on that ridge between Kenfield and San Rafael, that would be problematic.
One last, one last question. You need two-thirds passage, and you've got a number of jurisdictions. Assuming this goes to a vote, and assuming it goes to a vote next March, if one or more jurisdictions don't pass it on a two-thirds basis, but the majority do, what happens then to the JPA?
So as I understand it, the, this would go, if we have a majority of the agencies, which I think we will, based on early feedback, that move forward with this, it would go to the voters as a countywide initiative. If an agency did not pass the resolution to join, their voters would still vote. They would not receive the benefit of the JPA or the tax associated, the tax generation from their service area. But they would still be included in the countywide vote.
Well, so is it the countywide vote that is the vote of the county of the two-hundred-and-sixty thousand people that you need two-thirds passage from?
Yes, sir.
To form the JPA? So it's not district or locate, or region or zone by zone?
So the forming of the JPA would be after a majority of the agencies, I think it's ten or eleven, sign on. And then they would also simultaneously pass a resolution asking the Board of Supervisors to put it on a countywide ballot. If that fails to occur in a certain area, then again, it still would be a countywide initiative on a countywide ballot. The residents of that area would not receive benefit or the taxation.
Got it.
Well, that's kind of interesting, isn't it?
Very interesting.
First, let me say, thank you for the report and the work that you've done. It's been considerable. And the feedback I'm getting from our city manager and chief, I think it's fair to say, is both are, we hold a high regard and both are endorsing, if that's the right choice of words, the program. For good reason, I would suggest, you mentioned boundaries, et cetera, we know that intuitively. And so I think that it would merit us joining others to address this issue on a collective basis rather than individually. As you know, way back when, over a year ago, I guess it was August of a couple of years ago, I did ask the, our fire chief to, after, you know, the fires we saw in Paradise and certainly in Santa Rosa, asked the fire chief to present to us his thoughts and collectively the department's thoughts as to what San Rafael should do to better prepare itself and then maybe defend itself in the event there was such a fire. They went away and came back in January, as I recall, and I think they did an excellent job in preparing, at that point in time, thirty-seven points. I've added one, which is combining our efforts with the county, or more broadly, the other jurisdictions. the other jurisdictions. But I'll refer to them as 37 points specifically with regard to San Rafael and what our professionals indicated to us was necessary for us to be in a better position. And I appreciated that. My direction was pretty simple. Tell us what we need to do. Don't tell us that we don't have the money, because that's our job. We got to go out and get the money after we're told what needs to be done. So to be honest with you, I'm a little bit concerned about the way oftentimes is done. Let's figure out what the sensitivity is to the community and then establish that amount. And that doesn't tell me whether or not the 20 is going to do the job. I mean, my first direction would be, what do we need to do as a community, either San Rafael or more broadly the county? What do we need to do to prevent Paradise, I'll refer to it as? And with that, then I can come back and say, okay, we've got to raise not 178, but 250, or whatever the magic number is. But you've gone the other way. That bothers me some, because I'm not sure that that necessarily is going to address the issues we have. Furthermore, I think that many of the issues we have have been built up over a long period of time, the vegetation in particular. But if we address that, then it's maintaining that, which I think the expenditure curve is, you know, higher at the first period of time. I know it's two years, five years, 10 years, you guys would know that. But whatever that is, then we get into maintenance mode. So I don't know that we have a straight line 30-year tax. And furthermore, I'm not sure, quite frankly, that the amount is adequate to do what you would suggest. And certainly, we would ask our chief the same question. What needs to be done, not just with regard to San Rafael, but more broadly with regard to the community, before I'm going to feel comfortable. Two, with regard to the 37 points, I've been assured that this plan will, correct me if I'm wrong, chief, but it will cover the 37 points that our professionals have indicated need to be done. To better protect the city of San Rafael, and Quinn, who received the award earlier, has done an outstanding job, I think the chief would agree, of helping us go through that. What does that mean? Well, we were presented the 37 points adopted by city council. And Mayor Beth and I sat on that committee, and we appointed 15 other community members to help us go through the plan, because it was a framework, not an absolute plan, but a framework. And we are in the process of going through that to flush it out. We've had four meetings thus far, and we'll have a couple more scheduled. So the community has had an opportunity through the representatives selected to provide some input to that. I don't know if you're going to go through that same process or not, but I think what we have done has worked pretty well so far. And the chief and Quinn have been instrumental in helping us through that. Because I'll be honest with you, our community is anxious. Feedback I'm getting, maybe it's my own feeling, but certainly amplified by the comments I'm receiving from the community. We don't want to wait 10 years for folks to get their act together. We're not going to do that. And there are a lot of complications and, you know, you get into the nitty gritty, et cetera, et cetera. But our obligation, as I see it, our, up here, obligation is to our respective community, or specific community. It's certainly, I'm willing to join hands and work together and want to do that, quite frankly. But I'm not waiting. The community's not waiting. So let's make sure we get it together. Not a threat, but really an introduction. If there's anything we can do, Mayor Beth and I sitting on the committee, and certainly Kate and others for that matter, that can help facilitate this process, we're glad to do that. But there needs to be something very concrete that we can go to the voters and say, yes, we endorse this plan. And here's the reason why. And there's no, you know, uncertainty as to the particulars, such as a question that Andrew asked. You know, if you go to the plan, I'll get eventually to a question. If you go to the five districts, the map of the five districts, and I look at that, and if I were just San Rafael, I'd say, okay, let's dump a fifth of the money, 20%, into that, I guess it's red, or whatever that color is, in any case, San Rafael. And frankly, San Rafael, let's say 50 or 250, is probably going to put in 20%. The residents will. So I would say, okay, 20%, that's fine and dandy. But if I were to look at that maybe more objectively and maybe more broadly, I would say, geez, the West End, look at the size of that. Holy cow. We've got to cover a whole lot of territory there. So maybe geographically, we're going to have to spend a little more in that segment. Then I would look at Mill Valley and I'd say, with Mount Tam and the susceptibility we're somewhat aware of, I'm not certainly as aware as you guys, but somewhat aware of the susceptibility of Mount Tam, well, maybe we should shift some of the money in that direction. And that would mean it would come out of somebody's pocket and probably ours, along with the others. I'm not opposed to that. But in terms of the question and the answer, let's make sure we've got that lined up. I don't think we're quite there yet. I think that the 20% that we have, at least I've been told, that, you know, that 64, 2020, is the 20% for the jurisdictions, about 950,000. Now, I'm relying on you guys. Collectively, I would suggest we are, that that 950 is going to cover those 37 points that you've already told us we need to satisfy to be better protected in this community. And I've already said, you know, tell me what it costs and we'll find the money. Now, if the 950 does it, good, because I respect you guys. However, if it doesn't, we need to know that as well, as part of this program. Another question here somewhere. What about, I still don't quite understand the other communities, because I think there's some resistance, I've been told by some of the communities for their reasons, right, wrong, or indifferent, but nevertheless, some resistance to joining this. Give me a summary, if you would, where we stand on the other communities joining hands on this. I say communities, I guess the 13 districts, 19, or whatever it is.
So resistance wise, I think everywhere we've been thus far, people are very supportive. We're hearing questions like you're asking tonight, which we're incorporating into, I think, somebody mentioned, I'm losing track now, but check-ins, right? That, you know, we go from new work to maintenance and have to make adjustments. We're trying to build that into the JPA. So there's that flexibility piece. As for opposition, we have no formal opposition. We've been at the table with cost, which is Coalition of Sensible Taxpayers getting feedback, grand jurors that served on the grand jury that wrote the report, and getting feedback from them. And we're getting feedback from agencies that have recent tax measures, that are asking questions about, what does this do? What's the difference? What's the delta difference between what we're already paying? Southern Marin's an example of that. They passed a measure last November and are really trying to understand, what does this bring to enhance that? And working through those things. But there's no formal opposition to this date.
Well, formal's one thing, and still work needs to be done. I think you would agree with that, at least based on my understanding. Okay. Why don't we open up to public, for public comments? Anyone from the public? Please. No, no, please come up, identify yourself. You've got two minutes to ask questions or make comments or observations, whatever you feel appropriate.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Thank you very much, Chief. That was great, well-needed, and a beautiful presentation. I have a question about business contributions. And it's a lot of money you're asking. It doesn't seem enough also. But for, I would imagine that some businesses, this might be an opportunity to create some volunteerism, some tax deductions, who have heavy equipment, for instance, who have manpower. And also, how would they contribute if it's just a partial tax, because it is always on our backs? And is it something, I know I would be willing to contribute money towards, you know, more fire prevention in our area. And is this something, I've had the fortune of growing up in Marin and living in 17 different homes in different communities in Marin, and know that now I'm lucky to live in an area with a homeowners association that's very well organized, but most of the places I've lived have not had. And when we have a homeowners association like we do, we can talk about it, maybe we can do contributions and raise funds and volunteers. But when you live in an area that do not have homeowners associations and regular conversations, it's much more difficult. And, but yet, as a community, in a place I lived in San Anselmo that didn't have an HOA, how I know up on the top of that ridge, that people would have gladly contributed money to have more fire prevention and things like that. So just kind of consider an opportunity for both businesses and individuals and groups to contribute more towards that in any way that we could. That's what I wanted to say. Thank you again.
And thanks for your comments.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name's Jay Hubert. I want to thank you for taking this very seriously, and actually for your bold leadership in putting together 37 points in a, really a wonderful plan. However, it misses an essential point, which is that the city of San Rafael is also threatened by open space that lies outside the city's jurisdiction. And the importance of the JPA is the ability to address that issue and those threats. Here we are, two years past the Tubbs fire in Santa Rosa, one year past the campfire. And those threats came from the northeast in the fall of the year. We're looking at that again. In point of fact, I think some of the biggest threat comes from the northeast, and those who lie in the west of the county may have less, fewer people and less property at risk than San Rafael does. So I would urge you to expand your horizon and not think that the money that this raises should fall exclusively within the jurisdiction of the city of San Rafael. It belongs to protect the people within the city. And that includes spending money outside the city boundaries to protect the residents. I'd also point out that there are insurance implications that we're, some insurance companies are redlining 94901 and not writing new policies. This has an impact on the salability of homes within the county. And it's important to stress to residents that this is a benefit to them in terms of resale of their property. Thank you.
Good point. And I would suggest that we're not looking at San Rafael in isolation, but that's, you know, that's our jurisdiction. So we have an obligation to certainly address San Rafael in its entirety, but also specifically.
Hi. Good evening. Victoria DeWitt. I live in San Rafael. And looking at this map, yes, it really stands out how much of West Marin, what a big part of the area is. I mean, I'd be kind of interested, if they're going to be charging according to square footage, that's of a structure. It doesn't count, doesn't matter if that structure is on 20 acres or 5,000 square feet. So I'd be kind of interested to see how each of those areas, how much money dollars they look at generating from each of the areas, and then possibly how much money they anticipate spending in each of the areas. So.
We'll ask that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next person, please.
Hi.
Hi. My name is Belle Cole. And Mr. Mayor and council members, Chief Gray, and I'm speaking today on behalf of a group of climate and environmental organizations who support the wildfire prevention and mitigation initiative. Our primary goal is to broaden the scope and appeal of the initiative for the significant constituency concerned with climate change and the quality of Marin's environment. So first and foremost, we applaud, really applaud the Marin wildfire prevention authority's mission to build a resilient community and reduce the threat of wildfire to our lives, our homes, infrastructure, and environment. The countywide effort and resources sought are appropriate to the urgency and escalating scale of the dangers we face. As the initiative is refined, we urge the authority and all Marin communities to consider the impact that climate change has on the conditions that intensify wildfires and prolong the duration of the fire season. We endorse fire mitigation strategies that also protect the resiliency of the natural environment, reduce carbon emissions, and sequester carbon wherever possible. So the initiative offers a real opportunity to reduce both the threat of wildfire and the climate change that is fueling the threat. It's also an opportunity for full community participation in carbon reduction efforts as we harden our homes and our vegetation to mitigate the risks. So representatives from leading climate and environmental groups in Marin are invested in making this opportunity a reality. And to this end, we prepared a list of amendments to the WP and MI framework and an outline of best practices. Our intention is to support the strategies proposed by the initiative's framework while implementing them in ways that reduce the wildfire threat. So I won't go into what these are, but we will make these available to them, to fire professionals and anyone interested. We also recommend formation of a Marin Fire Authority Citizens Advisory Committee along the lines of the San Rafael Wildfire Advisory Committee. We suggest including representatives from the climate and environmental communities. And the residents of Marin are a tremendous resource. We are ready to pitch in and help. And thank you for the time and consideration.
And thank you for your comments. Thank you very much. Anyone else? Oh, Belle.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. I'm Bill Carney, and I'm representing Sustainable San Rafael, which is indeed one of the groups that Belle was speaking of. I think we're basically on the same page here. We, clearly, the first task is to, is to reduce the fuel loads as, at the same time that we're hardening our homes and our businesses against fire. We can do that in ways that add greenhouse gases to the atmosphere and thus increase the very forces of climate change that are driving this threat. Or we can do it in ways that actually reduce greenhouse gas emissions and ultimately sequester or capture those gases and thus reduce the threat long-term. So we outlined some of those in our letter to you broadly, and we are in discussions with the fire professionals. And I'm seeing a few words work their way into the presentation that weren't there before, which is wonderful. And I hear words like sustainability and climate change, which are absolutely integral to this entire effort. So speaking with your authority now, with the Beacon Award in hand, I think you've got some authority to weigh in on this. So if you could advise that, you know, you really, we should represent fully the full range of climate impacts in this authority as it moves forward. Most important of these is the assurance that all of this vegetation being removed ends up being composted and properly returned to very proven programs, sequestration programs like the Marin Carbon Project, where they can go into the ground and actually bring greenhouse gases out of the atmosphere. And then we start reversing things, and we really are meaningfully addressing the overall threat and reducing the overall threat of climate change. And beginning to move towards the objective, actually, of everything that's paid for under this resulting in net greenhouse gas removal or net, zero net emission of greenhouse gases. That would be a wonderful thing for Marin to take the lead on, showing that that can be done. And what better landscape to do it in? Thank you very much.
Excuse me. Thank you, Belle. Thank you for your comments.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. Linda Jackson. I am a resident of San Rafael and a member of the Board of Sustainable San Rafael. So with that in mind, I want to share that for a couple of years when I was in college, I worked for the Bureau of Land Management in Fairbanks, Alaska. And so I worked in the ware, in the maintenance, the warehouse that supplied the firefighters that went out and fought the fires in central Alaska. And I was a fire lookout one year. So I got to see fire management and perspective in a very natural landscape and saw how fire is just part of the world, that there's no place in this planet that's more worried about climate change. It's Alaska where the tundra is melting and the danger of fire is ever more increased up there. I want to follow up on what Belle was talking about, and specifically about the removal of trees. And the value of trees is not mentioned at all. Trees provide shade. They, they're a major part of addressing greenhouse gas emissions. And they help cool our public streets, our public places and homes where people live. When I first started working at San Rafael a long time ago, I worked on the wetlands overlay district. And in that wetlands overlay district, we had a policy that when an acre of wetland was lost to development, there's a replacement of two acres of wetlands because of the value that wetlands have to our environment. So I'd encourage the consideration of a two-to-one replacement of the right kind of trees in the right kind of places, so that we're not eliminating all of the trees that cause, are such a value to our climate and our community. But also, I like to suggest that are such a value to our climate and our community. But also, I'd like to suggest that we look and see who's not at the table when we're coming up with these plans and these rules. And I haven't heard a word about landscape architects who are very familiar with and like to see if they're involved in the advisory committee as well. Thank you.
Thanks, Linda. Any, anyone else? See, no one close in return for follow-up questions or comments. And I guess I would like a couple of follow-up category. Someone asked, and it was sort of dovetailing on what Andrew had mentioned, that is by area, the contribution of the 20 million that's been proposed. Maybe a status report, not that it'll be dictating to us what we do, but I'm curious, a status report when you're at that point of other communities, what they're thinking is, we are in this together, so I think it'd be helpful to understand some of their points, positive, negative, whatever they might be, but nevertheless, how do they feel about this? I think that's an important part of it. We didn't hear that this evening. I'd come back to the 20 million and mind the direction to the chief, tell us what needs to be done, and we'll go out and get the money to do that. The community is primed to, to prevent what we've seen, and so I don't think it's dictated by an arbitrary polling at this point, because it hasn't been sold. I don't think that's the right approach. Maybe that's the outcome, I don't know, but I just don't think it's the right approach, to accomplish what you think as professionals needs to be done. And so I wouldn't want to be constrained by that. And then finally, just my comment, I, for one, am very much in favor of everything that you're suggesting is a positive thing for the community, the broad community now. I get it, that it makes operational sense. I'm not at all resistant to that. So I'm, I'm very much in favor of that. Again, our city manager has spoken highly of the process and the city manager's involvement, the fire chief, same. I'm encouraged by that. At the same time, at the same time, we have a commitment to our jurisdiction, our community of San Rafael, to do all we can do. And if we don't see movement, then we're going to take steps that the community expects of us, and that's not to wait. So we look forward to flushing some of these points out. Having said that, comments? John?
Just a couple of things I'd, I'd like to hear a little bit more on, on the carbon sequestration issue. You know, what are we going to do with all this vegetation that we're going to manage? I've, I've seen what the goats do with it, but what are we going to do with the rest of it? And in a, in a big picture sort of way, how do our 37 points work with this program? Some things we need to do together as a community, other things we need to do just for San Rafael. What part of the 37 is covered by this proposal, and what will that leave for, for us to do here in San Rafael? Thanks.
And I particularly liked that I mentioned Mary Beth, and I, but Mary Beth, there's certain sits on the committee of which we have 15 other community members to address what our community specifically needs and wants. Most logical, most obvious, I think, example is the issue that Mill Valley is fighting. Do you want a three-foot perimeter around your house or five-foot, and what does that look like? That's probably not going to be in your plan, but it's something that our community expects us to address, and we will do that. So thanks again, Mary Beth, for all the work you're doing on, on that committee. With that, Chief, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council, and ladies and gentlemen, we appreciate the comments, the observations, and the input. We'll take that back and hope to see you next month. And I'll probably just repeat a comment that I've made over the last several years, which is, if you do everything right and your neighbor does nothing, you're at risk. And that expands beyond your neighborhood to the greater community and the county. And this is a significant opportunity to have an impact on that, where we're actually able to make a significant increase in the level of wildfire prevention and preparedness to our greater community. And I think is extremely important and resonated by all of you and the community tonight. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief. On the other hand, if I don't do anything, the next-door neighbor doesn't do anything, we're both in a serious jeopardy. But thanks, thanks for the progress to date, let's say. And with that, we'll move on to the B.
I move and accept the report.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, thank you. Is there a second for them?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Hi.
Councilmember Collins.
Hi.
Councilmember Gamble.
Hi.
Vice Mayor McCullough.
Hi.
Mayor Phillips.
I'm editor carries four zero. Move on to housing development challenges. And Katie Rice, thank you very much. We didn't bring you out, but thanks, thanks for everything you're doing. Okay.
Enjoy.
Oh, okay, Paul, here we go.
Boy.
Golly, yikes.
Good evening, Mayor Phillips and council members. It's always interesting to see that this topic always follows fire prevention. And it's not that that was intentional, it's really more coincidental, because both topics are such high-profile right now.
You're suggesting we're worn out, but hanging on there?
Exactly, exactly. So where I would like to begin is just a brief overview. Last August, and that was August 2018, we provided the city council with a comprehensive report on housing, and staff was directed to follow up on four topic areas, two of which, one of which we've already addressed, which is renter protection. The second is short-term rentals, which we are addressing. The third is housing for an aging population. And the last topic, which is the topic before you this evening, is challenges to the approval and development of housing. And so what's before you tonight is an informational report, and there's a lot of information in this report. I'm, I'm happy to say that I'm not going to cover all of it in the oral presentation, but I am going to provide some quick and brief comments about a couple of topic areas. I'll provide you with just a brief status report on housing production, the current housing activity and interests. This was an opportunity to provide you with an update on housing legislation. Last year, we gave you a table on the housing legislation and the bills that were signed by the governor in 2017. We had an equal amount of housing legislation bills that were signed by the governor in 2018. I have to say that most of them were amendments to the previous bills, but there are some new bills, and of course, it adds more layer to the local jurisdiction in terms of housing production. But some good news has come out of some of that legislation. There is availability for funds and money that are coming our way as part of those actions. And then lastly, the, the primary reason why we put together this report is to report on challenges to approving and development of housing. And what I'm going to start with is the approach that we've taken, the list of challenges that we've identified, and then some ideas that we have in mind that we would like some feedback on, some of which, by the way, we are already implementing. But to start, I just want to give you some information on housing development activity. During our last regional housing need allocation cycle, which was 2007 through 2014, 171 residential units were built in San Rafael. Of course, that was during the Great Recession. That number's not very high. The units built since the beginning of this current arena cycle, which is 2015 through 2018, is 141 units. Again, not a very exciting number in terms of housing startups. But I have to say that we have housing development activity that is very, very active right now in San Rafael. There have been a number of projects reviewed and approved and under review, and included in your staff report is a list of those projects. I'm happy to say that within the last year, we've approved a number of projects totaling 360 units that were residential units that were approved, 177 senior assisted living units, and then we have 300 units that are under review or in the pipeline. So our approach to looking at the challenges, we did a lot of outreach. We interviewed and met with a number of folks in different, with different backgrounds and different stakeholder groups. We interviewed six local and regional developers, both for-profit and nonprofit developers. We interviewed representatives from the Chamber of Commerce, Marin Builders Association, so on and so forth. We've also contacted our colleagues in other communities where housing success, been successful, and have gotten and received a number of best practices that are outlined in the staff report. We've also took a look at our inclusionary housing requirements, which have been in place since 1986, and the planning review process. We conducted a surface parking lot air ride study, which I will go into in a few minutes, and then collected data and information. And you may recall about two or three years ago, there was a grand jury report on housing barriers. So we, we brushed the dust off of that report and took a look at it to see, you know, where, what we could get out of that report. So that's part of the mix here. So in terms of the findings, we found that there are, and we've listed 11 challenges, and I'm going to go through those briefly and then get into what we have in mind in terms of addressing those challenges. And much of this was the feedback that we got from our interviews. So I'm going to go through those briefly. The first is our city entitlement review process. This is essentially the planning review process. What we heard is it has multiple layers and can be time-consuming. Second, our design review board process, which is linked to the first bullet point. The design review board is advisory to both the Planning Commission and the city council. They play a great role in our community. What we heard back from particularly developers who hire design professionals is that when you work with a design review board or committee, you get differing opinions. So there's a lot of back and forth, and many times, projects will go back and forth between the applicant and the board, which does cause delay. The other factor that we discovered through the design review board process is that our design review board is the first touch of the public forum. And so before we move on to the planning commission, a project will go to the design review board first. So if it's controversial, and it draws out a lot of people, the public comes to those meetings, and they have questions and want answers about topic areas that are not covered by the design review board, for example, traffic or land use density or land use in general, and they get frustrated. So there's a frustration on the part of the public, and there's also a frustration on the part of the developer. The third is the SEQA and then environmental review process. This can be time-consuming. It could add six months to a year to the process depending upon the level of environmental review, and it's also costly. The fourth is our city affordable and inclusion, inclusionary housing requirements. As I've mentioned, they've been in place since 1986, and the percentages that we require for inclusionary housing have creeped up over the years. Right now, the larger projects are required to set aside and provide 20% of their units for below-market rate. What we're hearing from the developers that we interviewed, the for-profit developers, is that percentage is very challenging and very high, and some communities have dialed back that number. Another constraint that we identified is downtown property conditions and zoning limits. Our downtown is an old street grid pattern. We have many smaller lots, and a lot of those lots are owned by people who have had this property for generations, and they're not, let's just say they're not willing to sell those properties. So there's always been a challenge, even with our former redevelopment agency, to assemble properties. The recent project that we, that was approved by the Planning Commission, and we'll move on to the city council, 703, 33rd Street, the Seagate Housing Project, is one example. They assembled three properties, they were unable to assemble a fourth. Had they assembled a fourth, it probably would have made for a better footprint for their project. So that's one of the constraints for downtown. The other that we're finding is zoning limits. The, what we're hearing from the developers is that the zoning limit should be higher or should be completely eliminated. And I'm going to get into that in a few minutes. And then last is parking requirements. Parking requirements always come up. As you know, we commissioned a downtown parking and wayfinding study, which has some incredible recommendations that we are going to be folding into our downtown plan. The seventh challenge is the loss of other governmental sources for housing subsidies. As you may recall, we used to have a redevelopment agency. Redevelopment agency was a conduit to funds from the state and federal level, CDBG, among others, and that conduit does not exist anymore. Layers of regulatory requirements, we have, every year, there's new requirements that surface. So we have green building standards. We have stormwater pollution prevention standards. We have water conservation standards. These are all good, solid requirements and codes, and the purpose is great. The problem is you add layers and layers, and it adds cost to the construction. Development and impact fees, as you know, we have development and impact fees, including a traffic mitigation fee, which is over $4,000 a peak hour trip. Those were, that was identified as a, as a big-ticket item in terms of pricing out construction. Land and construction costs, land costs can be 10 to 15% of the total cost of the project. And so if a project is, is developed in a community where land costs are high, that's a big challenge. And then lastly, I'm going to mention public controversy and opposition. This was the top barrier that was identified in the grand jury report. And basically, the grand jury report said that communities need to have the will and commitment to support housing and change to overcome controversy and opposition. So what have we come up with, with some recommended measures and actions to address these challenges? As outlined in the report, there are 13 measures identified, and each of them have varying degrees of complexity and required actions by the city, and it depends upon where you want to go with each of these. We have some that are merely a confirmation, no formal action, because we've already taken it upon ourselves to start implementing these. Some require further study, others require municipal code amendments, and then others require a resolution addressing a, a policy or practice change. So I'm going to start with the first one, which is streamlining the planning and design review board process. We offer a pre-application review process, which is terrific. It's actually very comprehensive, and applications filed, it goes through cross-department review. There's usually a development coordinating committee review of a project. Sometimes we bring in the applicant. What the applicant gets out of it is a very formal written summary of everything, including what to expect in the process and what studies that we're looking for. This process can take 30 days or up to 60 days. The city of Santa Rosa offers was a more informal pre-application process, and that is, it's, it's, they waive the fee, they essentially say to the applicant, if you've got an idea, bring it in, we will run it by our, our, our internal committee. You're invited to attend those meetings, and you'll get a quick response on your concept. This is something that we've tried on a couple of projects. It works really well. The only thing is, there's devil in the details, and that is, you can give, you can, you can give someone feedback on a great idea, but it's just a partial kind of response. It doesn't give you a full response. But it does, it is good at vetting an initial concept and providing initial feedback. So that's something to consider. The second is shifting the order of the public forum review. And this is, instead of going to the design review board first, you bring the project to the planning commission to vet the bigger-picture policy issues. We did this with two projects recently, North Gate Walk and the 703, 3rd Street Housing Development Project. It actually worked quite well, and what it did was it took the pressure off the design review board for having to deal with some of the bigger policy issues so that they can concentrate on their purpose and mission, which is looking at design. Some of the other options that are identified in the, in the staff report came up as part of our interview. Mill Valley, for example, a decade ago, eliminated their design review board. They took their design review, several of their design review board members that were design professionals and folded them into the mix of the planning commission. We're not suggesting that you do that primarily because our design review board does a heavy lifting on design, and they're great design professionals, and they can't be duplicated. The second is to shift the role of the design review board, make them more like the planning commission, where they're a permit authority. This has its complications as well, because let's just say you've got a project that requires use approval and perhaps design approval or rezoning, you're going to two different bodies for actions. So there's some complications with that process, and it could add to the, to the So there's some complications with that process, and it could add to the timeframe as well. The third, which we think is worthy of consideration, and that is, on small projects, assign a design review board liaison to review and vet those projects in lieu of bringing it to the full board. So this is something to consider. It would leave that liaison, the ability to bump the project up to the design review board, but it might help streamline that process. Okay, the second idea is to support a form-based code for our downtown precise plan. We are, as you know, we are deep into the preparation of a downtown precise plan, and our intent is to make it what's called a form-based code. A form-based code, unlike regular zoning, essentially establishes general site parameters for form through maximum building height and floor area ratio. So there's no density limit set in this type of approach. It also can include a menu of acceptable architectural styles and themes. So when a project comes in, if you pick a certain architectural style or theme, that's just, let's just say, common in your downtown area, and you work within this box, it will help streamline your review. Form-based codes have been used in other communities. Petaluma, their downtown plan is a form-based code, has been very successful. Also, the City of Redwood City has used the same formula. The downtown precise plan will also provide an opportunity to streamline housing development near transit. We are looking at a higher level of an EIR for the downtown precise plan, for which those projects will be able to tear off of. We are also looking to incorporate the downtown parking and wayfinding study measures into the precise plan. I mentioned again the seven oh three, Third Street project, the Seagate Development Project, because they've taken advantage of one of the tools in that study, which is an automated parking lift system, which actually significantly saved money because the cost of parking in a construction form is very high. And then lastly, as part of this plan, we are doing an update of our historic resource inventory for downtown, so that projects will be able to streamline off of this as they come along and not have to prepare historic resource studies. If you may recall, we've had a couple of projects in downtown that required to go through extensive environmental impact report review process. Project at the corner of Second and B Street, and also where the Aegis Development was proposed, primarily because they were demolishing historic resources. So the third is streamline the SEQA and environmental review process and practices. And frankly, this is one that I'm kind of like, it's hard for me because I'm from another generation of planners where the SEQA guidelines were actually the New Testament of the planning Bible. And so, but, you know, times have changed and things are a little different, and we are in a community now where most of our undeveloped land has been built out, and what we're seeing is urban infill. Not to say that we're not going to continue doing environmental review, but we need to take advantage more of what's available for categorical exemptions under SEQA. And as I mentioned, our downtown precise plan is going to have this ability to have an EIR that has a higher level of review so that projects can tear off of them. I mentioned the SEQA exemptions. I'm mentioning one in particular, which is a categorical exemption, one five three three two. This is an urban infill exemption that we used for both the North Gate Walk project and seven oh three, Third Street, which saved a lot of time and money for the process. This is not the typical check-the-box SEQA exemption. This is one that you have to demonstrate that there are certain impacts that are less insignificant, or that the project will not result in a significant impact. So it's basically a test of substantial evidence. And so it's actually a very good tool, and I'm glad that we used it on both those projects. So the fourth suggestion is to reduce requirements for certain technical studies. I already mentioned the historic resource inventory for downtown. You may recall, a couple of months ago, we provided you with a report on our changing world with traffic in transitioning to a VMT or vehicle miles travel time metric to, from level of service. And one of the questions that came up in the forum that we had discussed with you is whether or not we want to retain level of service, and if we do, perhaps limit requiring technical studies to the larger projects. Rafat Ray, our new deputy city engineer, has found that a lot of the traffic studies that we have been requiring on smaller projects, even in the downtown area, are unnecessary because they're basically telling us conclusions that we already know. So this is one way to reduce that cost to the applicant. Consider changes to the city's affordable housing requirements. Again, I've been around long enough to remember when our inclusionary ordinance was adopted in nineteen eighty-six, and I have to say, we've done a pretty darn good job at integrating below-market rate housing in market-rate projects throughout the community. In fact, it's surprising to see that we've got below-market rate units in high-end projects like Chapel Cove in Peacock Gap, Lock Lowman, and a number of the other areas. And as I've mentioned, our percentage requirements have creeped up over the years to twenty percent. We did some research, and we found that communities that have also had this twenty percent requirement have scaled back that requirement either permanently or temporarily. I'm mentioning Honolulu in this slide. They offer a menu of options to the applicant, and that is, they can provide the units on site, or they can pay an in-lu fee, or a combination of both. So it allows that discretion and gives that discretion to the applicant. The way our inclusionary housing provisions are structured is you must build them on-site. That's first priority. Second priority is if you can't do that, you have to build them off-site, and then the low priority on the totem pole is to pay the in-lu fee. And I can tell you, I don't think I've ever seen one residential project since nineteen eighty-six ever pay the in-lu fee. So some of the options to consider is to lower or reduce the requirement from twenty to fifteen percent. Most of the developers we talked about says, have told us fifteen percent has been workable in projects in other communities. Allow the in-lu fee payment, which will go into our affordable housing in-lu fee fund. Allow our lower inclusionary amount plus an in-lu payments, or a combination. Or change our affordability range. We have an affordability range that if it's a rental project, your below-market rate units must be priced at the very low and low-income category. This would be to, let's say, bump those up to low and moderate income. Temporarily lower the requirement to ten percent, or take a pause in this requirement until housing construction catches up. This was a suggestion that's come up several times. I do want to mention on all of this, the downside is this, and that is, we have a regional housing need allocation to meet, and if you read in the report, the one that we are most challenged with not meeting is the very low-income category. So once we start cutting away at our requirements, we could be undermining meeting those requirements unless we find them in another way. So the sixth suggestion is to consider changes to the use and the administration of our housing fund. Right now, our housing fund has about one point three million dollars in it. There's one million dollars pending. If you may recall, both the Aegis Assisted Living and the Oakmont Projects contributed a collective one million dollars that will go into this fund. One of those projects is under construction. We are teaming with the County of Marin to update our Nexus Study, which supports the fund that's charged, that goes into, or the fee that goes into this fund through an SB two grant, so that's underway. One of the suggestions is to perhaps eliminate the fractional fee for residential projects as an incentive to housing development. What this means is, if a housing project is required to, let's say, provide five point two below-market rate units, typically what they do is they provide five of the units on-site, and then they pay that point-two units in-in-lu fee, and it goes into the fund. And the suggestion may be to eliminate that fee. When the fund balance reaches a certain balance, release a call for applications or competition. We're getting, as you see, we're getting more and more money in this fund. I can tell you, in the last year, we've had a couple of groups and developers inquire about using this fund for their projects, and that, of course, is something that has to be approved by the city council. And one of the thoughts is, is if we have multiple parties requesting this, maybe we do a call for applications and have some sort of a competition. I can tell you, the use of this fund came up with the planning commission. When the planning commission reviewed the seven oh three, Third Street project, one of the thoughts was to boost some additional below-market rate component that had been proposed by the applicant, to boost it by using this fund. So that's one of the projects that, you know, could fall in this category for this competition. And then the last is to allow a market-rate developer to apply their required in-lu fee to a specific affordable housing project, or to promote a partnership. I actually was approached by one developer who has a housing project with a below-market rate housing component that they are required to build on the site, and they inquired about buying that out, putting that, their equivalent fund, or money into that fund, except for earmarked for a specific project, another one-hundred percent affordable housing project. So this is something to consider. Seven, to consider reducing or waiving development impact fees. We've, the City of Santa Rosa's done this. There are some downsides to that, and I'll get to that in a minute, but the fees are usually paid at the time of building permit. What we've heard from developers is if they can bump that fee to the time of occupancy, and that is at the tail end, it does help them out significantly because they're carrying that money for that period of time. Also, to allow a payment plan. We've had this request several times. Also, to reduce a fee for market-rate housing projects containing inclusionary housing units. Right now, we waive, for example, traffic mitigation fees for one-hundred percent affordable housing projects. That advantage is not afforded to a market-rate project. The downside to all of this is, you take, you reduce or eliminate fees, those services are still provided or needed, and it's got to come from somewhere. So where those fees fall short, you're tapping into the general fund. So there is a caution to that. Eight, to amend the density bonus ordinance. We've done really good at approving density bonuses for projects that have been under the thirty-five percent density cap by the state density bonus law. We have a couple of projects that have exceeded that. Again, I'm going to go back to the seven oh three, Third Street project. That project requested, and the planning commission conditionally approved, a one-hundred-and-sixty-six percent bonus, and it was a lot of back and forth with the developer over months, reviewing a pro forma, and it just took months and months and months to negotiate with the developer, primarily because our code is set up that if you request a bonus of over thirty-five percent, it's fully discretionary, but there aren't any specific guidances to that. So I think it's time for us to revisit our density bonus ordinance and take a look at that particular part of it. Something to keep in mind. Adopt a new accessory dwelling unit ordinance. We've been saying this for a long time. This is our low-hanging fruit. As you know, it's accessory dwelling units have actually gone crazy since the state laws have changed. We are still operating under the state law and have done quite well. We've intentionally paused at bringing forward an ADU ordinance for a couple of reasons. One is the state laws keep changing, and then other things have surfaced. We are looking to recommend eliminating off-street parking for accessory dwelling units citywide, except in areas where the fire department service access is challenging. In fact, this is one of the items that has come up with the Fire Prevention Action Plan. We have areas that are challenged for access, so we have to work out with the fire department how we want to deal with those areas with ADUs and also parking for ADUs. Allow tiny homes in the mix. We have a building official that's very anxious to tackle this, so this is being done elsewhere. And then the last is, we found that the City of San Francisco allows accessory dwelling units in multiple-family residential, residentially-developed properties. So we're considering adding to the mix ADU bonus unit for a duplex or multifamily residential properties, and so that's something to consider. Support the city developer partnership to facilitate housing. We have had in our general plan for the last two general plans, air rights development program, but we've really never done anything with it. So we had our intern prepare an air rights study of a handful of downtown parking lots. I have to say, there are seven lots that were looked at. One of them is not actually a parking lot. It is in five nineteen, Fourth Street, which is a city building that we use for storage and had been used as a temporary fire station number fifty-two. But that's part of the group of sites that we looked at. There are opportunities on these sites. What we had in mind is to make the air rights available at no cost to a developer for a one-hundred percent affordable housing project, so long as they replace the public parking, and that there would be no parking for the housing. So in part, some of this is consistent with our downtown parking and wayfinding study, and it's a little outside the box, but we're throwing it out there. And so this is just to give you an idea of the sites that we looked at, the seven sites from the west end all the way over to five nineteen, Fourth Street. Pursue state funding opportunities. This is in the works. We have already applied for an SB two planning grant. I'm going to go over that in a minute. In process is SB five, which is access to tax increment revenues to fund affordable housing. So this goes back to the old redevelopment agency formula, which is a conduit to money for housing subsidies. And then there are a couple of other bills that have been signed by the governor that I think we'll be able to have opportunity in pursuing. The next recommendation is to adopt a buy-right zoning for affordable housing projects. We've applied for an SB two planning grant. What we're looking to do, again, this is outside the box, is to establish a buy-right zoning for one-hundred percent affordable housing projects in the high-density residential districts. What this would do is, if the project's one-hundred percent affordable, it's zoned for that use, it would be exempt from our planning process and would have to comply with the objective planning and design standards that we're working on to meet and comply with our SB two thirty-five requirements. And linked to that is a pilot development project that's covered under this effort that will be included in this study, which is the Homeward Bound proposal that we have, we are reviewing at one ninety Mill Street. It's a combination of a new emergency shelter and thirty-two housing units for very low-income. So, and then the last item is consider raising the appeal fee and changing the scheduling process. The appeal fee has not been adjusted in decades, and the appeal process can add significant time to the overall process for the project. Right now, a resident appeal fee is three hundred dollars, and it's being suggested that we take a look at this as part of our master fee schedule update. The other is to require, to set an appeal hearing within five working days of the appeal filing. Right now, trying to jockey a date, let's say, to get to a city council's schedule when you're dealing with an appellant or appellants and an applicant is challenging. What this would do is it would set a date for which we, the date is actually set within five days of the appeal. So that really covers everything. I'm so sorry that this was long-winded, but you saw how long the report is. I don't think I really had much of an option, and I think I've got enough wind in me to answer questions.
Mayor Paul started with thirty-seven points, but he carved it down to thirteen.
We have to limit him from now on. First, I'll just comment. I think your report's extremely comprehensive, well-done, as was to be expected, but certainly you've provided us an enormous amount of information. And I guess what I'm wrestling with is how we effectively... And I guess what I'm wrestling with is how we effectively integrate this in our thinking. You've laid out a lot. I mean, I circled, I know it was what, 155.52, and how am I going to figure out whether or not that's the right direction, if that's what you're asking? I suspect the others, they can comment for themselves, but there's so much here. I guess I'm having a little trouble saying, okay, are we just going to accept it, or are we going to deal with it more comprehensively, or how are we going to address this? And I was going to actually start the presentation by asking your advice and recommendation as to how we, how do we do justice to everything that you presented to us, which is a really terrific job.
Well, I certainly had not hoped that you laboriously went through one by one each of these, but...
Well, I did.
I mean, in terms of discussion and direction, and I do know that Jim has some thoughts on this. I think, aren't you going to mention something, Jim?
Because I wanted to do justice, but, you know, how to go about that, I'm a little uncertain. I appreciate other thoughts on that, too.
And, you know, but I couldn't, I could not, other than to tell you what we're already doing and what you really don't have to tackle right now, I think some of these items are already sort of in the works, and so they fall in the category of just confirming, here we go, and no action, but, you know, some of these others require, I guess it depends primarily on, you know, what maybe your top priorities are in looking at this. I can tell you this, we have a housing working group that's part of Together San Rafael that's going to be looking at whatever you come up with, but I really, other than that, I don't know how to break it down. And Jim, I know you had a suggestion.
Yeah, Mayor, I would add also that we're looking for any feedback tonight that you have on any of these things that you feel like that sounds like a good direction, or we couldn't, we don't think we could live with that. You know, some initial feedback would be good. But primarily, I think that we haven't done a lot of community outreach on these items. I mean, Paul's talked to a lot of developers, and there's been a lot of thought, obviously, that went into this. But this report itself hasn't really been out there that long, and all of these different recommendations. So I think you're going to get some public comment tonight that gives you some suggestions about what happens next. And I think that's in keeping with the way we're thinking about it as well. It's like, start working with the community on some of these things more specifically, maybe put together a plan of which things we would want to bring forward right away as a first phase, or what could be a next phase, after receiving some input from you and after receiving some input from the community. And I think, I guess that's somewhere here tonight to make those comments.
Well, we're certainly anxious to hear from the community. I am, and I know the others are as well. Frankly, after 22 pages, I was a little overwhelmed by, yikes. Were you? Tell me you were.
And my, I have the exact same question that the mayor had, which is, how do we prioritize it? And that was like, how do we go about this? So maybe as the public is making comments, if they can help give input on that, because all the recommendations, as you're reading, you're like, yeah, that sounds good. Yeah, that sounds good. And, you know, 25 checks later, it's like, how are we going to be able to tackle all this?
And how do they all sort of fit together? And what's the end result? I'm having a little trouble envisioning that at this point. In any case, questions of staff at this point, and then we'll go to the public.
Just really quick, of the 13, were those ranked in any specific order in terms of low-hanging fruit and maybe look at it from the standpoint of which can be addressed in phases? Might be, might be the right word for it, you know? Is it number 13 or December 12? Take action.
Yeah, I actually put together the slides so you could at least see all 12 on one slide. And the ones that I think are the most challenging are number five, the inclusionary housing requirements. Number six, the changing the administration of the funds. And number 13, the appeal fee. Some of these other things are in the works. One is in part in the works. Number two is in the works. Three, we are, we are working on. Same with four. So process of elimination, those are things that we are already doing that I don't think you need to focus your attention on. I think eight would be part of the inclusionary housing and the housing fund. Reducing development impact fees, I think that's worthy of some comments. The ADU ordinance, we're going to do that anyway, so I don't know if you need to discuss that, other than some of these other ideas that are included in the mix. So, yeah, I think that's the first shot I can suggest.
But that's pretty cursory. I mean, I'll take one as an example, a design review board. Now, I sat on, three of us sat on the planning commission. We know the design review board, we all do. But this is sort of the first introduction of other approaches, and I guess I need to think a little bit more about that and understand the consequence a little better than I do sitting here now, tonight, to be honest with you. So my question would be, and then we'll go public, my question would be, how, what does that mechanism look like for us to take each of these and give them due credence? I mean, you've spent a lot of time on this. Again, thank you for doing so. But how do we then take this, and maybe we're negligent tonight, I don't know, but if we are, we are, but how do we better address the recommendations, for example, the DRB, just as an example, restructuring that, or the reordering, going to planning and then DRB and address that as an issue?
Well, my first thought is, if you want to go through these one by one and just comment, doesn't sound like you want to do that. The, you know, I don't have any other suggestions for...
Could you mind if I just put something out there? When I read through this, and I also agreed, it was an excellent report and a long time coming, not a comment on how quickly or slowly you did it, but just it's so topical and it's so urgent, and it's great that we're able to address it. But I think much of what we see here, as it rolls out in the form of solutions or changes in our community, it's going to be a somewhat iterative process. And I think that the best way to do that is using a vehicle we've used in other contexts. And at the risk of creating more bureaucracy, I think this really lends itself to a subcommittee process whereby this is now being exposed to the community. We're going to get feedback tonight, but we're going to get feedback in stops and starts from various stakeholders over time, once they've had a chance to spend more time on some of the issues here. And I think the most efficient way to bring this back to the council ultimately for disposition and then for more precise direction to staff is through a funneling process that, and I would, and I'm saying it because there's a little self-interest here, I would love to serve on that committee if it is formed, because some of the issues that have been raised here begs for more, for a deeper dive and more discussion, more extensive discussion. That said, I have a few comments of my own, but I'm anxious to hear from the public before I share my comments, because I think I might learn from what I, from the folks that are here tonight.
Okay, well, I've thought of that, and I'm sure others have as well, or maybe a workshop approach. I'm sort of grinding through this. Tonight is not the time to say yes.
If I may add, Mayor...
Yes, please.
I think that that was a segue into something that I had in mind also, is that certain topic areas warrant, for example, study session. You know, and maybe it starts with a subcommittee, and then we select those that we want to tackle in terms of study session for that deeper dive.
You know, I appreciate your interest in it. I'm not sure this is a perfect model for it, because there are specific recommendations, of which we'll all have comments, and I don't know what the subcommittee, we'll see about that. Okay, so let's go to the public. Help us out here, folks. Diane Henderson, how are you?
Very well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Diane Henderson, I'm a land use planner, I'm a property owner, or a business owner and a homeowner in San Rafael. We have a housing crisis, and I don't think anyone would argue that. I sit on the board of the San Rafael Chamber of Commerce and also the Marin Builders Association. And in both cases, that is the top concern we hear from our membership. They cannot hire people, people cannot afford to live here. Tonight, you heard your new superintendent of schools say the same thing, that housing's a grave concern for them. We have to do something, and we need to do it quickly. If we don't do it, the state's going to mandate it, and in a manner that is not favorable to us. And we've seen that already with SB35. We've seen it with what the governor and Senators Weiner and McGuire are working on, where they're going to take away local control. So people are going to be able to come in and just build without us having any say. I think it's really important that you empower your staff. I'm working, I have two projects right now that have been through a pre-application review, both of which don't fit the standard requirements of housing in San Rafael. And staff has said, mm, these are interesting, but I don't know what the council would think. You have a great stat. PJ here ought to be given an honorary master's or doctorate for that report tonight, seriously. I mean, it's excellent, and I think it raises a lot of great concerns. We have needs for senior housing. I'm on the board of Rotary Manor. We have 97 units. We currently have over 250 people on a waiting list, which if you do the math, that most of those people will never get the opportunity to live there. And that number grows every month. I lost my, both my parents in the last six months at ages 95 and 96, and my siblings and I spent the last several years trying to figure out housing for them. My father was a council member in Nevada and wanted to stay in the community he loved. There are not options. We've got to do something. I think we need to empower your staff to think outside the box and reward them for bringing you creative solutions. Thank you.
Thank you, Diane. I agree with that.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, city manager, staff. My name's Lorenzo Jones. I'm the board chair of San Rafael Chamber, and a couple of comments. And I'm going to end with, or start with, what you just discussed, and I think it's relevant here, and that is, the chamber requests that the council create a subcommittee. It's, I think it's overwhelming. We just went through a great presentation, and it's like going into a sushi restaurant. You look at the menu, and there's like 100 items, and I think this is the case here where we applaud you for all the efforts in looking at the housing needs. The chamber also would like to acknowledge that the city and all the businesses in the city really rely on the housing. You know, it creates opportunities, not just with housing, but with all the other efforts that are happening in the city as it relates to the economics. So we understand it's a very complex issue. We understand that there's a lot of conversation that needs to be had, and we appreciate you looking at all the housing stock and all of the needs of the community here. By all means, the chamber would love to support you with any committees and any efforts. So again, on behalf of the chamber, thank you for putting all of your efforts into acknowledging what's needed here in San Rafael. So thank you.
And thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council, Carolyn Leonard. Thank you, staff, as well. One of the things mentioned early on was public opposition is a barrier to development and progress in this area. Well, I'm pleased that you're looking at public safety issues with the fire program discussed earlier this evening, and I'd like to carry some of this work on this topic back to basics. For example, water. The developers don't bring it. Our water comes from the sky. Sonoma County is overbuilding. Before the fires, they had planned 50,000 new units. They will take back North Marin's water that they sell to Marin Now. So when I think of planning, I think of comprehensive planning for all the resources involved. Back to fire protection. A six-story building has been authorized. Interesting. How far up will the hook and ladder go to reach the people on the top floor? Because it has to lean at an angle, it can't go straight up, okay? So how many new hook and ladders do we need at $550,000 each? And which developers are going to pay for that? So fire protection, the third thing is electrical. Our electrical grid nationally is incredibly vulnerable to technological failure. The book is Ted Koppel, and it's horrifying. So I've worked personally on getting a new transformer into 94903. Took forever, and it cost $3 million, and we stopped having brownouts at the hospital. So I'm interested in going back to the basics. One of those pieces that's missing here is, we have a census coming out. At this time, the state is doing unfunded mandates, and the people being asked to pay for these mandates are the people that are actually eligible to move into this below-market-rate housing. Wow, that's not fair. So I want to see things, innovations like single-room occupancy at any hotels that fail, that could work. I want to see definitions. Everyone throws about the term affordable. Does that mean I spend a half of my income on housing, or a third, like we used to? What does affordable mean? And stop using the term if it's undefined. When you build 100% affordable, no parking? Well, the people I know who live below-market-rate housing, they have three vehicles, they don't have zero, okay? They don't take any transit. They have two working cars at one time.
Can we wrap it up, please?
I'm wrapping it up.
Thank you.
So let's learn the lessons from the past feedback from the public, and let's address the issues raised by the public. Let's reinstate the planning academy. I'm dealing with people who have no understanding of what the city does in its planning process, and let's actually do some finer, precise planning in this area, learning the lessons instead of repeating the mistakes.
Then thank you for your comments.
Thank you very much.
Next, next person, please.
Good evening again, Mayor and city council members and staff. So I'm here with my hat on for the Aging Action Initiative. We work for over 250 organizations, public sector and nonprofits, that work for the well-being of older people in Marin County. Today, when an older person loses a spouse or a partner, and they're not able to have the full income that they had before for their housing, and they go to somebody working in the field and they say, what do I do? The advice is, think about leaving Marin. Think about leaving your home in San Rafael. We can't find people to take care of the homes, can't find people to take care of older people in their homes, because they can't afford to live here. And the folks that do commute here are impacting the places they live in, because they have to get workers from further in in the Central Valley. So the greenhouse commitment expense of not having enough housing for people who work here is terrible. We support, I support all of the recommendations. They need, some of them need to be tweaked. I would suggest that the in-lu fee might look for going subsidizing some accessory dwelling units. Many of the units that have been built are accessory dwelling units. The county has a program, you can get a grant to build accessory dwelling unit and then participate in the Section 8 program. So that's a way to get some affordable housing there. I would suggest taking, looking at rules for assisted living and board and care and transitional housing and group homes off the list. These are units, this is housing with the very specialized additional services, and there are other ways to be able to get more units here without spending time on making it prohibitive to build these kind of units that are needed. Just a couple more points. Parking lot evaluation, that's super. I would suggest going ahead and issuing the RFPs on those lots and see what comes in. I'd also suggest partnering with other public agencies who have property in the city and faith organizations to see if they would like to participate in that kind of evaluation on their properties. So older people who are living here are now finding it impossible to stay. I think you can make a difference so that they can keep in their forever community here in San Rafael. Would support a subcommittee, it's worked well at the county, to have a subcommittee to vet these things and work them through, and then bring them forward to the full council for further evaluation and consideration. Thank you so much.
Thanks. Yes, great.
Yeah, I want to, Greg Nell, San Rafael, support Andrew's point. I think you need to have a subcommittee, and we need to get a list of priority and start attacking these things. It's a wonderful report, and there's so many areas there. One thing I would urge against is eliminating the affordable housing requirements. Just don't even go there. We need, we need, we need those affordable units, and putting money in a fund, or these fees, you never see anything come from that. And a million bucks is not enough to build anything, really. Just a comment, being here for 35 years, just recognized by the chamber, thank you for my 35th year in the Chamber of Commerce. Not once has ever the major complaints of our affordable and our housing programs ever come true. Never. St. Isabel's, the women there never turn their TVs up too loud to bother the neighbors. That was promised that that would happen. The traffic impacts. As Carolyn said, people don't understand, there is no traffic impacts to residential housing of the kind that people talk about. It's just never happened. So I think what we need to do is just push ahead, get the subcommittee, have the study session, start attacking these things right away. I think what the chamber is saying is that we what the Chamber is saying is that we cannot wait anymore. Let's start doing something now. We can't get teachers, you know, to work in our community, and it's, it's just such a crisis that I think that we need to start moving. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening again, Bill Carney, wearing my sustainable Samarfeld hat again. You know, I think this is, I'm sort of all of the above on this. It is a great collection of ideas, and I think as quickly and thoroughly as that can be processed and put into place, certainly the better. I think that Samarfeld needs to send out a strong message that Samarfeld is open for business, for building housing, and building more housing and building housing that is more affordable. So, a couple of ideas, just to sort of add to the mix here of consideration, and these relate to Items Five and Six, the inclusionary and the, the housing fund, which I see as potentially linked. So, perhaps putting some of the city's in lieu housing money, or housing fund money into achieving the twenty percent of inclusionary goals. That developer seems to be having a hard time reaching. There's a Sustainable Samarfeld letter that you have related to the Seagate project, or the Planning Commission has, and I think you probably have seen it, that, that puts this idea out for that particular project. So, that'll be coming to you and something to, maybe a testing field for some of those ideas. Perhaps increasing the in lieu fee on commercial development to help both with more funding for housing and to address the jobs housing imbalance. Thirdly, perhaps including moderate-income units in the mix of affordable, as it is defined, in the inclusionary provisions of the city. So, that, that expands, you know, an economically more viable kind of unit, as part of that twenty percent. And maybe five percent of the twenty percent does come with some city putting, coming to the table with some of the inclusionary, I mean, some of the in lieu funding. Finally, on the funding side, Number Eleven would ask that the state's cap and trade funds be considered as a source. I know affordable housing is one of the qualified things. I don't know what goes into that, but when I hear that, you know, state energy requirements, et cetera, may be part of what's raising the price, well, let's get some money back from the state for that same, in that same purpose. And then, I would plan to take this very great report and pass it on to other members of the Citizens Advisory Committee. I just changed hats to Citizens Advisory Committee, because I think that's a great forum as well that could give you guys some feedback, and I'm sure you read those minutes with great anticipation every month. So, we'll get you a set of those. Thank you.
Anybody else? Yes.
Good evening again, Victoria Dewitt. I live in the Weston neighborhood.
Oh, thanks for your comments. Very insightful.
I'd like to comment on, number one, the streamlining of the planning process. We have definitely noticed a difference in applications coming through now, and we really feel that the planner is not performing the necessary review of the applications before sending it out for comments. And we find that flaws in the application are discovered at a later date, resulting in longer overall processing time. For example, one application we received, a member of the Design Review Board discovered that the lot was overstated by fifteen percent. So, the hearing was canceled, and a land survey was required. We've had other issues. I won't go into everything. We feel that we're addressing issues in our comment letter that should have been addressed by the planning review prior to sending out the request for comments. We've been receiving multiple requests for comments for the same applications. These are single-family dwellings on a hillside. So, we question how they're streamlining this process. It's really, we do notice a significant difference, and it's, it's not a favorable thing to us. Eliminate the Design Review Board. I don't support that idea. I think, isn't there a Planning Commission liaison at the Design Review Board hearings that maybe they could comment on what should be discussed later at a Planning Commission meeting? And, you know, we think the Design Review Board should review small projects on hillside lots, single-family dwellings on hillside lots where the design can be challenging, particularly because most of these lots are substandard, the ones that are left to be developed. So, I would really appreciate the Design Review still reviewing those projects. The Design Review, or the Design Review Board could also consider taking over some, taking over some of the zoning administration hearings, which have increased three-hundred percent since 2014, and that's something the planners do, and they seem really stretched. Maybe the zoning administrators could, or the Design Review Board members could step in. As far as the ADU ordinance, the junior second units, really don't feel those should be allowed on steep hillsides. The city's municipal code defines a substandard street as twenty-six feet in width. I live on Fremont Road in Upper Fremont. They're nine to ten feet wide in some areas. There's no street parking. There's only private parking. There's no sidewalks. There's few street lights. It's very steep. No one's going to walk to the bus up there. And the Fire Department has actually stated that they cannot respond to Upper Fremont in an emergency within the industry-recommended response times, and this includes emergency vehicles. So, I really feel these second units on hillsides with the super-substandard roads should be curtailed for safety and health reasons. And I think there should be incentives to build smaller homes, whether it's tiny homes or just smaller homes, and some of these small, undersized infill lots. Everyone wants to put three-thousand square feet. I think smaller homes serve a population and create diversity in the neighborhood, and I, but there needs to be an incentive to do that. And as far as the appeal fee, you know, I'm not, I don't live in a wealthy neighborhood. Our neighborhood association is not wealthy. Believe me, three hundred dollars is an impediment to our neighborhood to appeal. So, I would really appreciate not raising, at least, you know, maybe on the larger projects or something, but not on, on regular projects. Thank you.
Thanks, thanks for your comments. It's a race. It's a horse race.
Good evening, Ossia Sorkis. I'm a staff attorney at Legally in Marin. Thank you all for your attention to this issue. It's really, really important to not just my clients, but to the whole community, as you can tell. What I would say is, I'm really encouraged that affordability is being taken into consideration in these projects, and I was encouraged that Mr. Dunson had included that in a lot of the issues here. What I would say is, we're pretty concerned about any changes to the inclusionary housing requirements. As you know, those affordable units that could be built, those below-market units, are really, really needed in the community. So, I would just urge you to think really carefully before either suspending those requirements or making any changes to them. And again, thank you so much.
And thanks for your comments. Josh.
Josh Townsend, Samarfeld Chamber of Commerce. Thank you, and just want to commend city staff for that excellent report. I think a lot of what was pointed out really gives you a lot to think about, gives the community a lot to think about. I think one piece that the Chamber has really been focused on the last five months is housing, and how we can drive more housing into downtown. One thing that the Chamber's commissioned is a study that's very similar to the study that the city has put together, and we've been talking to city staff, and we're waiting for those results, and, and really want to compare those notes once they get back. But, but we're hearing a lot of the similar items that, that staff pointed out. I think, you know, Number Five and Seven were two of the, of the biggest issues we're hearing right now. Staff's recommendation on possibly having a threshold of lowering the inclusionary, and then once you hit a threshold of units, then bumping it back up. That's always something that, that, that we've seen in other communities that have worked well. I think one thing that the Chamber really, really realizes is that, that you as a council, and us as a, as a public and as a chamber, have a really unique opportunity right now. It seems like every few years, housing comes up, and we kind of wave it along and say, "Oh, we'll deal with it the next time around. Oh, we will, we'll deal it in two more years." Well, I think right now is a time to act, and the Chamber really encourages that we, we create that subcommittee, as you recommended, and really act on, on housing, because it's so desperately needed, not only for the businesses, but just for an economic vitality boost to the city. Thank you.
And thank you. Anyone else? Going once, twice. Thank you for your comments and help with this, because it's, it's quite an onerous task. I have a, I have a basic question. On your second page, you make reference under Housing Production, and it talks about three-hundred-and-twenty-four units being approved, and a hundred-and-seventy-one were built. To me, that indicates broadly speaking, there's more to the restraint to building than the stuff we're talking about. If you approve three-twenty-four, and only a hundred-and-seventy-one were built, then it's gone, three-seventy, three-twenty-four have gone through the process, and not very many are being built. I think there's a whole economic dynamic that's taking place, and we should recognize that as a community, because we can change DRB before or after. That's probably not going to change things significantly. Use whatever you want. I think we all agree that housing is important. I have two daughters that are both teachers, don't live in Samarfeld. I keep saying that the community has lost two really good teachers. I get that. But there is an economic driver behind this, and we're not, the city's not building, the Chamber's not building houses, so there's something else taking place that's a constraint. In any case, John.
Just to confirm, Paul, the, the numbers that the mayor speaks of, the hundred-and-seventy-one were built, and then we have three-hundred-some more that have been approved right now. So, it wasn't that we had three-hundred approved and only built a hundred-and-seventy-one of them. We built a hundred-and-seventy-one that were previously approved, and we have three-hundred more that are, that are, that are in, approved, but just haven't started building yet, correct? So, there would be like five hundred.
Correct. And out of fairness, a good chunk of that are numbers that were approved, projects that were approved in 2019. The tables that are on this page, on Page Two, where you see total units approved from 2015 to twenty, well, to 2018, is two-hundred-and-sixty-one, and a hun, of which a hundred-and-forty-one were built.
Well, let me understand. Does that, does that mean three-twenty-four were approved, and, and only, I'll say only in context of three-twenty-four, a hundred-and-seventy-one were built? Does that mean the remaining, whatever the differential is, a hundred-and-seventy units are going to be built, or they are not going to be built?
Well, that's really up to the developer.
Well, I understand that.
Yeah.
But what's your experience? My question is, are we approving a whole bunch, and the developers are not in fact developing them, or is this misaligned?
Yeah, that's happening. Lock Lowman Marine is a good example. That project's been approved since 2007. Of course, granted, we had a recession. They started construction maybe five, six years ago. About fifty percent of the housing units in a hot housing market have been built, and they haven't built the rest of them. The other project that comes to mind is eight-fifteen B Street. Forty-one units. It's been approved for three years, not built. So, fortunately, we have a demolition permit that's been, been issued on that project, and construction, construction's going to start. But there are certain things that are out of our control, and, you know, like the construction schedule and how they handle their financing, et cetera.
Anyway, any more questions? Mayor, Ben.
I'm stoked. Very excited. I've been waiting for this report for a long time. This is the portal through which we can begin a, a journey to make real changes in, in our community and address an urgent issue. Paul, you've done us, once again, a, a great service in giving us this menu. I don't, I see some underlying themes that I think we could give our general thoughts on, on to you now, so that you can have something to incorporate as, as you move forward. And I will be happy to make my, my first comments on preliminary and, on big principles, on, in general, ideas to improve the process are great. I think we can move forward with those. Those are not, are not controversial. Focusing on sort of your, your middle ones, Five, Six, and Seven, I'm very concerned about using public property for housing, even subsidized housing. That would be very complicated and raise issues of favoritism, gift of public services, all sorts of things. It's, I think, an unnecessary complication when we want to move quickly towards getting housing built. I'm also, I'm very concerned about decreasing and waiving fees. Those fees are there for very specific purposes, and I think we, we are, as you described, those, those necessary functions aren't going to go away. They're going to have to come from some other place. So, I have, I have great concern with reducing development and impact fees. I also have great concern about reducing parking requirements. In all my time on the Planning Commission and City Council, I have never heard, never had a group of constituents come forward and demand that we decrease the amount of parking. It's always been a problem of, of not enough, particularly in neighborhoods with, with narrow streets. In the places in the community where we have off-street parking now, it's, it's pretty well tapped out. So, I'm, I'm concerned about that. That leaves us, I, I think, really focusing on Five and Six, as ways that we can seriously move the needle in the, in the, in the foreseeable future. And I think that's where we should focus our, our attention and see what we can do there. The, of those two, my focus would be to go, to focus on Number Five, because I think that's the way to unleash the private sector the quickest. Six, we can change the administration, but we've got to collect that money, and then we've got to distribute it and negotiate it. It, it takes a long time to make that happen. So, there are my general principles. I, I too would like to be on any subcommittee that there, that might be appointed. So, I don't know, I might have to flip a coin for the Peacock Gap representation.
I disagree only mildly with what my colleague has suggested. That is, in terms of the substance. As for the composition of the committee, I defer to whatever makes the most sense. I, just as a way forward, I, I have some specific thoughts, but I'm reluctant to share them, because if we're going to go into a committee format, I think it's easier to take all of the various comments, some of which we've heard tonight, but more of which we're going to hear later. And I'm particularly interested to hear what the results of the Chamber's independent study yields, because they're going to have ideas that, when they go into the mix, may be more or less provocative and, and deserve more scrutiny by us. I, I think that what I'm gathering is the thrust of the staff report, which is, there are certain initiatives that are underway, and certain initiatives that either deserve or are receiving additional study. I think that should continue. I think that where the recommendations, where staff's recommendations do not appear to suggest a series of alternatives for which you are seeking feedback to decide among the alternatives, you should continue your work along those lines, and those are fairly self-evident. For those that absolutely require a policy decision, like, for example, changing the inclusionary housing requirements or changing the fees, that's where the results or the work of a subcommittee or work, series of workshops would be very, very useful. One issue that hasn't been raised, but I think that's important, and it gets to the question the mayor asked, and you responded to, Paul, is where we have approved projects in the past, or we may approve them in the future. Depending on where we are in an economic cycle, or depending on the pro forma that the developer comes up with, there may or may not go forward with the project. So, do any of the solutions that we're looking at here to prompt more housing development, should they be considered as retroactive solutions? So, for the hundred-and-something units that have not been built, where there's a reluctance by the developer to proceed, if it's, for example, a fee that won't be triggered until they pull a permit, should we sit down with them and say, "As a result of this community effort, we think that fee may be adjusted if you decide to pull that permit"? That's an issue that I think we're going to have to confront if we want to stimulate housing that's been approved but sitting on the sidelines. I don't know if there's more I can say now without getting into some of the details that, if we're going to reserve it for later, I'd rather do that.
Thank you. Okay.
Yeah. And I concur with my colleagues. This report was phenomenal, and I think all of us are going to go back and reread it and click on those links. So, thank you, Paul, and your staff for putting it together. I think we all agree the status quo isn't working when you look at what we've been trying to do and what we've wanted in terms of the amount of units that we've wanted to have built. I think we all agree the status quo isn't working when you look at what we've been trying to do and what we've wanted in terms of the amount of units that we've wanted to have built. Whether they're approved or not, they're just not built, they haven't been built to the degree that we want them to. So trying to get at that. As we go forward, and you got at this in your staff report, recognizing the type of units that we can build, that we're most likely to have. A lot of these policies and ordinances were put in place when there might have been more open space or more ability to do big projects. Reality is, it's infill, it's ADU. So as we go through it, let's really focus on where, where we really can have some movement. And you did definitely refer to that, and that's the absolute right approach. I'm not going to get as into it as Mary Beth did in terms of pro and con, but I am going to echo some of the areas I agree that we need to delve further in. So and I think they're all kind of floating to the top, and it mirrors what you said. The inclusionary percentage, that is so counterintuitive. I mean, when we were on the planning commission, we're really proud that we had twenty percent. I can remember that. We are so proud of it, and yet here we sit today, and that, to recognize that number might have been prohibitive and why, part of the reason why they haven't been built. And I'm really glad that, that we're going to be taking a deeper dive on that. The in-lie fees, there is a way to use those. I know someone had mentioned, oh, you can't build anything for a million. Yes, but we can be part of other projects that are going forward. We can match. So I like having the flexibility of that. You talk throughout the report, fee structure review and timing of payments. Yeah, I mean, we've got to look deeper at that. I think that, that is a big piece of it. I think that was your number seven. Appeal fees, you said that's going to be challenging. So agree that that, that needs further scrutiny. We didn't really get into it up here, but the state legislation, boy, those five pages, I couldn't believe it just kept going and going and going. If you haven't looked at the staff report, I'm telling you, go look at this thing. It was like, oh, my gosh. So there are going to be things coming down that we will not have control over. That's, that's the reality of it. So how do we make sure that the policies and ordinances we're putting in place mesh with what's coming down? That, I mean, that, that came through really loud and clear. And you, you turned an excellent job of outlining what we have control over and what we don't have control over. The density bonus ordinance, yep, need to review that. I think that's a key piece of it. And then finally, the subcommittee of workshops, I also want to be on that subcommittee, so, and maybe it's a workshop. And I think it just goes to show how important that issue is to all of us, that we all want to be a part of it. I mean, time and time again, we've heard about housing, and, and we all want to be wrestling with it. And I think that's what it takes, both up here with the staff and with our community, figuring out what works. So thank you, and I look forward to the next conversation.
Dan, thanks for coming.
Yeah, last comment I'd have is that, you know, a lot of these things, as we know, take time. And well, we'll, we'll start here with, with this initial report, and then we move on to a study session or a subcommittee and, and then get a report back and then work our way through. And then a year from now, we're, we're maybe starting to put some of these things into place. My, my recommendation might be that, that when we're talking about being bold, is, is going out there to the public and, and saying that we're working on these things now. But if you have a project that you want to get done, and, you know, to the point of, let's just, let's just look at the, I don't know, the, the Homeward Bound piece. And they, they currently zoned for thirty-two units above the, the shelter. Why wouldn't they come to us and say, can we do one more floor? And even though that's not in our policy right now, for us to look at that as a, as a one-off while we're working toward that, so that we, they don't go ahead and get their project approved for thirty-two units and start breaking ground on that and doing that. And then we go back and, and adjust it to where now they would have to redo the whole thing. If that's the direction that we're going, we should put that out there and, and, and look at some of these projects as they're coming due on a case-by-case basis as we're working our way through policy and not just wait for a year or two or more before something comes into place. So that would be my comment.
All good comments, and I've been wrestling with a better way of approaching this from this point forward, because again, outstanding report with a lot of stuff here, but a lot of recommendations. They're fairly specific, and that's the only reason I'm thinking maybe a subcommittee is not going to help us in this case, because they're clearly spelled out and, and there is, I think, a desire for all members of the council to weigh in. And so it might be somewhat redundant to go through it and then bring it back and go through it once again. So it strikes me that a workshop where you could break this into, you know, manageable components, two or three, or whatever that number is, I'll leave that up to you, might, might be more acceptable to everyone. We understand the issues. I don't think that's, you know, it's so complex that we, we can go and understand it, but rather, how does it interrelate? So if, with the nodding heads, I think we'll plan to put together a workshop, and we can work on the timing and so on and so forth of that. Since I've got comments too, good, no, yes, maybe, so, et cetera, et cetera. Probably don't want to go through all of those tonight. But I do have maybe a little bit of cold water to throw on this, because keep in mind, we're all advocates. We see our various reasons, various approaches as to why the housing is necessary. Look, I, I get that. But I also get a lot of kickback whenever there is a develop of any kind proposed. It's, well, it's a traffic and it's, you know, you all know the, the arguments. And there's something to that side that, that I think it's important for us to recognize. And so I guess what I would do is I would say, at least in a broad principle, thinking of the downtown in particular, what, what areas do we have that might be developed in a way that we would prefer? And how can we promote that? Maybe it's through various combinations of fees, et cetera, et cetera. And, and envision what it should be or could be, and then drive that in a marketing sense to make that happen, rather than just, gosh, we'll change the rules, DRB first, second, and hope, fingers crossed, that it's going to result in something specific with regard to a development. Maybe think about a slightly different attack on this thing. Thank everybody here in the room anyways, in favor of providing more accommodations, particularly with the changing demographics of our city, along with many others. But the economic reality is there as well that we need to, I think, wrestle with in some way. I'm not sure. It's not fees, and we're going to offset, we'll get a million bucks, sounds like a lot of money, build what, one unit? I mean, you know, there's more to it than that. So ramble a little bit, but with regard to the approach that might give us the best results with the interest that we have from the community and certainly the members of council. If it's OK with everyone, we'll go in the direction of a, of a workshop. And Paul, you can do your song and dance two or three more times. But excellent job in presenting this evening. Does that make sense to you guys? I'm looking for approaches here, quite frankly. OK, if it does, and if it makes some sense to those in the community, let's do that.
Yeah, I, I think it definitely makes sense. I'd also love to see the results from the chamber study that they referred to and see if that brings up any other ideas. But it makes a lot of sense. Thanks.
OK, with that, I don't know what, what do we do? Do we accept this, or we not accept it, or what do we, what do we do?
Make a motion that we accept the report?
Second?
OK. Moved in second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bush.
Aye.
Councilmember Collin.
Aye.
Councilmember Gambler.
Aye.
Vice Mayor McCullough.
Aye.
Mayor Phillips.
I am at curious five zero, and we'll move on to, if I can find my agenda. Yikes. The, the next item. Where did I put it? Yikes. Oh, let's go this one. We're well beyond seven thirty-four, by the way. Your in-jury report. This will be quick. Right? I hope. I don't know if I think, but I hope. Andrew's got the answer. Way out there. Daniel, what do we do?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Tonight, for your consideration, is a formal, formal response to the recent grand jury report entitled Marin's Telecommunications Disconnect, which was released in mid-June. I'd like to mention that Ms. Jean Bonander, the executive officer of the MTA, is in the audience, and she's available to answer any questions that you have regarding the MTA. And Vice Mayor McCullough did contribute to the response that staff drafted. So the grand jury report specifically discusses the grand jury's findings relating to the activities and function of the MTA. The MTA is a countywide joint powers authority that the city of San Rafael is a part of, and Vice Mayor McCullough serves as the agency representative and is on the MTA Board of Directors. The MTA was established in nineteen ninety-eight, and its function is to negotiate, collect, and disburse cable TV franchise fees and public education and government or PEG access fees, and to coordinate telecommunications in Marin County. Among other activities, the MTA does the following. They monitor the county's cable franchise agreements. They provide customer service on cable issues. They provide limited support for broadband improvements, net neutrality, and digital inclusion efforts in the county if directed by the board and if within their allowable resources. And they also administer the designated access provider agreement with Community Media Center of Marin, or CMCN. And that's the nonprofit that is video recording our city council meeting tonight. Recently, there have been changes in telecommunications regulations, such as the Digital Infrastructure and Video Competition Act of two thousand and six, and various FCC rules that have been implemented since. And those regulations have preempted local authority and have limited the MTA to cable television oversight. And over time, the MTA has adapted accordingly. And in, in as recent as two thousand and six, the MTA went through a strategic planning process and revised their mission statement, which reads as follows. Support availability, accessibility, affordability, and public inclusion in the advancement and enhancement of telecommunications infrastructure and services in Marin on behalf of MTA's members and the community. And as a response to that, this led to a reduction in staffing and operating costs, and they reduced their annual operating expenditure costs by fifty thousand dollars from the fiscal year twenty sixteen, seventeen levels. In their review of the function of the MTA, the grand jury provides three recommendations that the city of San Rafael is required to respond to. Recommendations R two, R three, and R four. R two is that the MTA's franchise fee collection and dispersment activities should be moved to the Marin General Services Authority, another countywide joint powers authority. R three, MTA's responsibilities for CMCN should be terminated. And the third is R four, the MTA should be dissolved. At this time, considering the changing environment of telecommunications, staff recommends that these three recommendations require further analysis. And what this means is that the city can review and evaluate the grand jury's findings at a later time and take appropriate action. As I mentioned earlier, Ms. Bonander is here to answer any questions about the MTA. Thank you.
Thank you, Daniel. Questions, comments with regard to the staff report thus far?
Well, yeah, no.
Do you want to hear?
Yeah, I, I'm happy to make any comments that would be useful in considering this item, but I think it probably makes sense to hear from the public first if they've got specific concerns, and then we can.
Let's do that. Public comment, please. Come on, come and all. No? None? Yes, we've invited you to speak first. We're going to start at the top and work our way down.
Hi, good evening, everybody. Bruce Bogdan from San, San Anselmo. It's been a long night, I'll be brief. I'd like to thank the council for taking the extra time to look at this report. The grand jury does not pick cases arbitrarily. The vetting process is strenuous and democratic. It has, it has access to resources and information not available to the general public. Excuse me. It takes a year to do an investigation and write a report, which has been reviewed and approved by all nineteen grand jurors in the plenary. In the final analysis, the grand jury determined the Marin Telecommunications Agency, established in nineteen ninety-eight, had not served its intended purpose for many years and recommended the agency be dissolved. That's a harsh and unprecedented judgment from the public's official civil oversight body, which cannot be easily ignored. It is also a portending of the future. I doubt this is, this will be the last time this council is asked to look at rightsizing government. And it's hard to imagine a better opportunity or an easier challenge. Earlier, we heard about, he didn't have enough government to, for fire prevention. So the grand jury suggested we actually add more government. Here is asking you to subtract some government. OK, so I've read through all twenty years of the MTA's online records, and in my opinion, the findings match the facts, and the recommendations are appropriate. The Marin IG editorial board found the same. Both the MTA and this council have had a chance to counter the grand jury's arguments, but neither has taken the opportunity to defend the MTA's successes or remind us of its quantifiable contributions to the public good. The MTA performs two functions. It processes cable franchise fees and manages one contract with our Community Media Center of Marin, for which it says it spends only thirty percent of its time. MTA member jurisdictions spend a quarter of a million dollars a year on average for these services. Am I done? Seventy thousand of which is paid by San Rafael out of general funds. By comparison, the bottom seven members spend seventy-five thousand combined for equal privileges and voting power. If my time is up, I would simply, there are two outstanding audits, franchise fee audits, the MTA is conducting. They have been meeting in closed session about potential litigation since February. I suggest that you wait at least until the MTA has cleared the litigation.
And then thanks for your input. Anybody else? I got a couple. Carolyn.
Good evening, Carolyn Leonard. Well, this is a complex issue and a complex program involving technology and innovation, so pretty hard to keep up with. But I urge the council not to accept the status quo and not to do a pro forma approval at any level of any aspect of this based on the track record. And after looking into it, I think you'll agree that the agency needs to be dissolved, but before that happens, I think San Rafael needs to withdraw. But to be entitled to the audits that are taking forever, from two thousand and fourteen, we don't have an audit completed. From two thousand and seventeen, we don't have, who's paying this auditor? And why is it taking so long? So I think this is an opportunity for the council to ask for the results of that audit and get some results from it, especially since we've been paying for. And lastly, to encourage the council and staff, whenever there is a JPA like this, to increase oversight, follow the money. This shouldn't have happened. This is the horse out of the barn a long, long ways. I've attended MTA meetings at which cogent, powerful reports from staff come forward. Mr. McCullough was present at one of those meetings I attended. At the end of which, on the record, the chair said, what's five G? Five G is lethal. It's coming. It needs regulation. It needs everything we can attend to, but we don't need the kind of people administering and being paid, you know, for that, to ask that question, what's five G? That was their job, and they let us down horribly. So we need better controls, better oversight, and we need to act on this. But thank you for delaying it until we had a full council to take a look, a hard look at this. If you see five G in the future, all the red bells, all the red lights should go on in your mind, because this is a very dangerous technology. Thank you for your consideration.
Good evening, Kim Hahn, private tutor, forty-plus-year resident of San Rafael. I respect the grand jury process. They're not in the business of having any kind of monetary advantage or kickback from their hard work. It seems that the original purpose of the MTA, which was that of keeping an eye on the telecommunications of this county, has fallen by the wayside. But rather than making this change a public matter, this body has chosen to keep the public in the dark. Who knows if this was intentional or just one of those dysfunctional byproducts of governmental, political, or corporate entities? It really does not matter why this happened as much as it matters that it happened. If the civil grand jury has discovered that the MTA is not fulfilling its duties and any city in Marin just sweeps it under the carpet, then that city is complicit in the dysfunction. Changing the name of the organization to more accurately reflect what it really does, though an attempt at transparency is not a solution to the problem at hand, namely, why should an agency that is not doing the job it was designed and established to perform, still collecting fees and salaries for not doing what it is supposed to do in the first place? It just so happens that we are at a crucial point in time with regard to the telecommunications status of this country and of this entire world. I just listened to six days of a podcast entitled Five G Crisis Summit, in which a myriad of international speakers presented voluminous scientific, technical, and medical material, exposing five G for the insidious, greed-driven, dangerous threat that it is. Because our county is taking a backseat on this issue, with a weak position against the overreach of the federal government, each of the municipalities, including the unincorporated areas of Marin, has had to work independently over the past year to generate protective ordinances and resolutions. We have no idea if the telecoms will pay them any heed, and if there will be any litigation, or if they're going to be sued at a higher level. What we do know is that San Rafael is presently looking at three applications for small cells as we gather here tonight.
Thank, thank you. Robert Ernst.
Robert Ernst, thirty-year resident of San Rafael, and I will pick up here. What we do know is that San Rafael is presently looking at three applications for small cells as we gather here tonight, and it would be foolish for us to assume that there won't be many more coming in the ensuing months. We know that because of previous federal legislation known as 6409A, forty-one existing antenna in San Rafael can easily, be easily swapped out for 5G small cells without having to go through a rigorous process via the recently passed Small Cell Resolution. We know that the FCC just passed a ruling that makes private dish technology into radiating 5G antenna, which can become cash cows for homeowners. We also know that the MTA has done nothing at all in this area to protect the residents of Marin. We know that the cleaner, faster, ultimately cheaper, and astoundingly safer alternative of fiber optics to the premises has not been thoroughly examined by the MTA, yet they have continued to accept a whopping amount of money while the wolf is at the door. Please vote to give San Rafael back to its $70,000 franchise fees, so it can formulate a plan that utilizes the Lucas Fiber Optic Loops. Get the community into a safe and secure means of telecommunications independence that will serve both businesses and residences with clean, affordable, and most important, safe technology, while there is still time to protect the children.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, staff. Vicki Severs, EMF Safety Network. I wrote to the council on August 18th suggesting that council members welcome the in-depth evaluation of the MTA delivered in the Marin Civil Grand Jury Report and give the jury's recommendations their due. As you recognize from last year's work on the Small Cell Resolution alone, we are living in a time of increasing telecommunications complexity, which is bringing growing threats to public health, the environment, privacy, and cybersecurity. Even cities smaller than this one are confronting disabling criminal cyber attacks. With respect to health and the environment, Washington State University Professor Emeritus Dr. Martin Paul said in a broadcast last week, "We are running as fast as we can in exactly the wrong direction." Long overdue leadership is needed to provide across Marin County information on telecommunications, above all, high-level technical telecommunications expertise. Such expertise could have, for example, years ago embraced potential benefits of aggregation for developing fiber to the premises, a serious loss identified in Grand Jury finding number two. Anything less than highly competent leadership in this area represents a dubious use of ratepayer fees. According to the Grand Jury Report, franchise fee collection and dispersment can be handled efficiently by another agency while the Community Media Center of Marin, governed by its own board, can operate without MTA oversight. San Rafael receives the highest portion of net franchise fees of any jurisdiction, close to one million per year. Dissolution of the MTA or withdrawing from the agency would save monies that could be wisely directed to the pursuit of safe, reliable, fast, secure fiber to the premises, and perhaps creating a model program that educates residents about staying safe in the face of untested technologies on our horizon. Thanks.
Thank you. Let's see, it doesn't look like anyone's... Anyone else? Miss Kayla, it's her close. Come back. Andrew, help us with this.
Very helpful. Thank you for the commentary, some of which, of course, I'd heard, or at least read in the course of a number of emails leading up to the earlier scheduled meeting. There's a couple of things going on here in the comments, though. There's the 5G issue, which is important, but I think risks perhaps unintentionally misleading us on what it is, what the grand jury is seeking or would have us do, and what we're here to decide, because 5G is a little bit of a red herring. And then there's the cost accounting overhead issue. And Bruce Bogan, who was the first speaker, has attended quite a number of the MTA meetings and has been, at times, a critic, but at times, an insightful one, and I appreciate your sentiments, Bruce. Carolyn, your comment about the chair's comment about what is 5G, I don't recall that comment, or at least I don't recall that comment being made seriously, so I'm not quite sure how to weigh your invoking it. But let me just make a few background statements, and then, to the extent that it's appropriate, certainly Jean Bonander, who is the relatively new executive director of the MTA, can come up and add to it. My first comment is that the MTA, its name itself is a misnomer. The Marin Telecommunications Agency, long ago, ceased to act as an overseer of telecommunications in Marin County. With the passage of Divka, as Ethan pointed out, with the passage of Divka in 2006, and then as it was subsequently amended in 2007, taking effect in 2008, the, the purpose and the jurisdiction of the MTA shrunk considerably. It wasn't apparent to the MTA for a number of years thereafter that its jurisdiction had shrunk, and for a number of years, the MTA continued to try to be more of a telecommunications advocate than it was in fact allowed to be. So that's one constraint that was imposed on the MTA, a legal constraint. The other constraint imposed on the MTA was a financial one, and it was probably best illustrated by the departure of one jurisdiction, Larkspur, several years ago. The financial constraint is, as was intimated by some of the speakers, the MTA pays its executive director a salary and has other overhead costs to operate, and the balance of the MTA's budget then is remitted back to the jurisdictions that form the MTA, because, keeping in mind here, the MTA's sole purpose in the wake of Divka is to manage the collection of franchise fee payments and oversee the distribution of peg fee payments. The franchise fees are paid by the cable operators as a privilege for doing business here in Marin, and those fees go to the jurisdictions that are served based upon subscriber revenue. So the franchise fees amount to about $4 million a year, and it is correct, San Rafael is about twenty-six percent of that. We get about a million dollars of the four million. Like the other jurisdictions that form the MTA, San Rafael would like to see that nine-hundred and something thousand dollars come into its coffers every year. What does that mean? It means the MTA has a duty to keep its overhead as low as possible. A few years ago, the Community Media Center of Marin faced a, an economic problem not of its own making, and needed bridge funding to get through a period so that it could come out the other side and remain viable. The CMCM came to the MTA and asked for that bridge funding, and the MTA provided it out of franchise fees. That led to a reaction by some of the members, including myself on behalf of San Rafael, as to whether or not that was an appropriate use of franchise fee monies. Larkspur felt so strongly about the issue that they withdrew from the MTA. The result of that was the MTA went through a strategic planning session, I think it was in 2016, and realized that going forward, the oversight of the cable operators and franchise fees had to be paramount in order to protect the assets that should be going to the jurisdictions, that is, the remainder of the franchise fees. The result of that was that these other issues became even more tertiary than they already were. So, for example, the role in providing advocacy and policymaking advice on 5G, among other things, was relegated to a much more distant priority after the management of franchise I asked during the discussion item on our calendar earlier this evening about the Marin Wildfire Prevention Authority, that is, the proposed MWPA, what its likely overhead cost would be if it took in $20 million, and the response that Jason Weber gave us was that it would likely be in the neighborhood of $1.2 million, which, interestingly, is a little over five percent of its total budget. That is what the MTA, what the MTA's overhead is, a little over five percent of its total budget, with the balance again being remitted back to the cities. So I say this because I don't think that the, what, the ultimate disposition of the MTA should be some sort of plebiscite on 5G. I say it's a red herring because, again, the MTA has consciously not devoted its scant resources to telecommunications policies issues, but instead has, in order to meet the expectations of its jurisdictions, has sent money back, the franchise, as much of the franchise fees back to the jurisdictions as it can. Now, should the MTA be dissolved and its, its franchise fee collection mandate be done by MGSA or some other organization? That's certainly possible in the future. It may make sense to do so. If we see cord cutting continue here in Marin County and franchise fees suffer as a result, then the overhead share of the franchise fees coming in will only increase, and there would have, there would have to be then, a better economic model to manage those fees. Right now, I don't think that, that, that model is to bring it back to individual jurisdictions, because, as an example, and the one that was cited by Bruce, and Carolyn, there are audits underway right now of Comcast and, well, AT&amp;T, I believe is wrapped up, and I have to be careful what I say because some of this I received in closed session, and I'm not, I'm not sure what I'm allowed to say. But there are pending audits, there is a pending audit with Comcast in particular, that if each individual jurisdiction were to attempt to audit Comcast, the cost would be astronomical. To do it under a joint powers authority is the only way to make it economically feasible. So for that reason alone, and the oversight, of course, of CMCM, which is another important obligation of the MTA, I think it does make sense to see the MTA continue, but I think, and this is the reflection on the further analysis part of our, the proposed responses here, I think that the MTA's progress in serving its constituencies, its communities, should be monitored, should be carefully monitored, and we have to decide whether there is value in having the MTA continue as is. I've been something of an internal critic of the MTA because I like Larry Chu for Larkspur. I wasn't entirely happy with the bridge loan that was approved and the use of franchise fees to that effect. And so I want to ensure that the MTA continues to streamline, to keep its costs as low as possible, and by the way, the hiring of Jean Bonander was, was an example of cost cutting. We went from, I think, a .8 FTE in Barbara Thornton, her predecessor, to a .5 FTE in the hiring of Jean Bonander, which means that salaries and, and other salaried positions were reduced as well in order to keep the overhead costs down. But this is an ongoing oversight issue by each of the jurisdictions. Whether or not it makes sense to see MTA continue, I think at the moment it does, but it bears continuing further analysis. Unless Jean feels it's appropriate to come up, I don't know that I have specific questions for her, but if she thinks that there is stuff to offer, then I'm happy to hear it.
Well, certainly, I would, I would suggest that if you have questions, since you're a representative, I would certainly entertain those.
Well, I don't have questions of Jean. I, I don't think that I've done an exhaustive job in reciting the background here, but I do think that unfortunately, the grand jury was, missed the mark here in their recommendation. I think that it's, I think that it would be abrupt to terminate the, the MTA at this point in time, but I think in the long run, that may be the ultimate disposition of the MTA, and the grand jury may end up being proven right.
It's to be curious. I mean, the grand jury makes their recommendation, you follow them or you don't, they don't have dictatorial powers, and therefore, what are the other members going to, your best guess, what are the other members going to do?
Well, I mean, I, my sense, and it's just my sense, is that the other board members of the MTA feel somewhat similar to me. Some are more bullish on the MTA and its future, some, like me, are a little more jaundiced about it, but right now, I think the consensus is it makes sense for the MTA to continue to carry out its function, the oversight of the cable operators and the collection of franchise fees. But if it gets to be uneconomical to do that, then the MTA should dissolve.
And thanks for your clarity on that. Any questions, comments?
Not necessarily questions, but my comments, and I, I respect Councilmember McCullough's participation in the MTA. I, I disagree with, with his position on this in the end. The, while the creation of this, this JPA at the time might have made sense, I, I think it actually has run its course, and the, the need for it in terms of serving as a, a vehicle to collect fees just to turn around and pass them out, and to your own point, they, they don't see function, they're not doing research on future technology, the, the best use of 5G or fiber optics or whatnot, and if we have other, other agencies or units within the government, the county or city, to be able to collect those franchise fees and then to distribute those, I just don't see the validity of having another, regardless of that we've cut overhead, you know, by thirty percent, that it's necessary to have. And I would agree that, you know, just talking to the man or woman on the street and how they're getting their content now, from where it was three, four, or five years ago, is, is changing and is changing rapidly, so that the franchise fees that we might be receiving from Comcast or AT&amp;T or any of the, the old providers will be decreasing quite rapidly as people switch to the Hulus and the Roku's and every other name out there to get content, I mean, Apple TV and, and everybody. So while it may have served its purposes at times, I believe that it's, that time has come where it's no longer valid to even spend fifty or seventy or a hundred thousand or five percent of, of the franchise fees. So I don't think there's a whole lot that we need to do in terms of in response to the grand jury report of taking more time to research this. I trust that the grand jury has spent a significant amount of time on this, and I value their opinion, and I agree with their, their opinion on what needs to be done. So the, the way that the staff report is written to say, I believe it says, requires further, further view, I don't think we need to take further time. I just think that we should, my opinion is I agree with the, the grand jury's filings, and, and we should accept those as they submit them. And if, if we're the only ones that do that, then I think our next step would be to remove ourselves, to look at removing ourselves from the MTA if no one else is going to do that.
Me, I would agree with you in principle, but, but I'm a little bit confused. I have the impression that actually, the cost among the various JPA members is actually going to be less by staying with than having the individuals perform whatever service it is. And if that's the case, then I would, I would think that it might make sense to continue. But, but help me understand that.
If I could, just one factual clarification. John and I appreciate your sentiments. The cord cutting that we're seeing in other jurisdictions hasn't happened really in a significant way in Marin to date, and maybe, and maybe a reflection of our demographics, that we're an older community and people are less adaptive to new technologies. But while we've seen the franchise fees plateau in the neighborhood of $4 million, we haven't seen them come down. The CPI increases on your cable bill have offset the cord cutting to date, but we could see that turn in the next few years, we could, we could see a real shift, as it has in other communities. And if so, then it's going to make the overhead climb, and that's when I think it's appropriate to, to make such a radical change. To the mayor's comment about the economics here of having the MTA perform this function versus having individual jurisdictions do it, the average, the, or the cost for retaining the outside audit firm to conduct an audit of Comcast alone was in the neighborhood of thirty-something thousand dollars. If each of the nine now jurisdictions that are part of the MTA were to do it, that's $270,000 that currently is costing the MTA $30,000 to do. Now, you may say, "Well, there's no need to do the audit." If you don't do the audit, then you're at the mercy of how Comcast calculates the franchise fees. The audit is what keeps them honest. So that right there is a fairly significant impediment to getting rid of the MTA and bringing it back to the jurisdictions. It doesn't, however, mean that you can't repose that responsibility in the MGSA, another JPA, but in conversations with the MGSA, they've indicated to Jean that they're not in a position to accept this responsibility for reasons I can't and wouldn't go into. So in the absence of there being another JPA or organization that's willing to accept this on a joint basis, it probably makes sense to continue with the MTA for now. But the reason why it says it bears further analysis is not that, "Oh, we need to study and study and study," it's that this hasn't declared itself. I think in the fairly near future, we're going to see whether certain trends come to pass, like cord cutting, or we're going to see whether or not it continues to make sense to bear the roughly five percent overhead, if that increases or if we can bring it down further. if that increases or if we can bring it down further. When this declares itself, we'll be in a better position to say, "Is the MTA vital to us, or should we begin the process?" It's about a one-year process to remove ourselves from the MTA as a jurisdiction. I think we, San Rafael, should continue to consider this. And perhaps calendar this for coming back in six months and 12 months to look at this anew. I don't have any special, I'm not beholden to the MTA, and I don't have any special attachment to it as an institution. I want to do what's right for San Rafael. Right now, I think that's, continue with the MTA at the moment.
So just to follow up on that, you mentioned Larkspur had pulled out. Nevada pulled out as well, is that correct?
Nevada was never a part of the MTA.
Never as part of it. So with their franchise fee collections, what is Larkspur doing to audit? Are they paying $30,000? Are they not auditing? Is Nevada not auditing? And if they noticed a, you know, if they don't audit, is it... I mean, it's hard to come up with a number, but if it's $30,000 for an audit and they're relying on Comcast to tell them what... Do you believe that they're being shorted more than $30,000 by not doing the audit, if they're not doing one? And that's a question I don't know.
Well, I don't know prospectively what they're going to do. But right now, they're free riding on the MTA because the audits are retrospective. So they go back to audit years 2010 to '14 and '14 to '17, something like that. So both those audit periods contain Larkspur's tenure with the MTA. What they do going forward, I don't know. Whether they can contract with the MTA to conduct the audit on their behalf, that may be what they do.
I think someone mentioned that we haven't... When was the last time we've seen audit results? What was the last calendar year that we've seen audit results?
We don't have the results of the Comcast audit yet. That is, the final results. There's, and this is where I'm not sure what I can say, because I've only learned this in closed session, there's a continuing dialogue between the MTA and Comcast on the results of the audit and what should be paid.
And as much as you can say, or if not at all, I understand that as well, is the audit proving worthy?
Let me... I believe I can say, Jean, that the expectation of the board of the MTA is that there will be a net positive result after the audit process is complete.
Okay. Other comments?
So I actually concur with Councilmember Gamblin on this. I think the MGSA can handle the change in their structure, if that's what the community, or that's what we're going to be asking for. And you say the winding down process takes a year. I mean, I think that's something we should start looking for, as opposed to, you said it's abrupt. At some point, we're going to have to start, and I've been swayed by the civil, the grand jury. And I get it. They don't, you know, they do a lot of reports, they investigate, and they don't always nail it on the head. But on this one, I'm swayed. I think what the MTA was originally put into place for is not what they do. There's another structure in place that we can use and that we should be creative and bold and, you know, call it for what it is and say, "Their time has passed." In terms of the audit, because MGSA would be doing it, that additional cost, that same cost would still be managed by them, so it wouldn't be $270,000, it'd still be $30,000. So I agree also with the recommendations, and I think we should start the winding down process, whatever that looks like.
But didn't you say they weren't going to accept that?
Yeah, maybe you misheard me, but the MGSA has declined to take over the function.
Right. But you're right, they've declined. But as the conversation goes through all the jurisdictions, if they come back and say, "You know what? This is something that we would like to do," aren't they also a JPA that is managed? And they serve our cities, they serve us, you know, they serve our communities and say, "Hey, we recognize this is what your original charter would be. We also want you to go back and figure out how to make this work." I mean, I don't know enough about the MGSA, but the fact that these conversations have taken place, the fact that the civil grand jury says this is a group that can do it, you know, we should have, those discussions should continue, as opposed to saying, "Okay, yeah, you're right, it can't be done." Like, I don't know why we wouldn't push that a little bit more.
Who's in charge of the MGSA? Is that the board of supervisors?
I can jump in, or Vice Mayor. And maybe Jean, if you want to come down and talk about this particular issue as well. But I can tell you, I reached out to, so the MGSA has an executive officer, which is Michael Frank, kind of an equivalent role to what Jean Bonander has on MTA. And it's made up of city managers and public works directors throughout the county. So I've been on the MGSA, and San Rafael's been represented on it. And my understanding in asking the executive officer about this particular question is that he felt that if it were just a matter of taking in the money and dispersing the money, then that would be something that the MGSA does all the time and would likely be capable of doing. But there were other recommendations as well that were part of the grand jury's recommendation in terms of a citizens committee, and there is, you know, this ongoing question of audits and that sort of stuff. So I think the, and do you have any sort of board or separate subcommittee or something, or is that all entirely gone? And I think the idea was, depending on what it was, it was not something that MGSA would be able to take on. You know, if they could change that view, I guess, over time. But that's, I just want to check with Jean and see if that's consistent with what she's heard as well.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. I'm Jean Bonander, the executive officer of the Marin Telecommunications Agency. Just general background, we took the grand jury's reports seriously. And the MTA board formed as part of their finance and policy committee, reviewed this in a subcommittee format and brought it forward to the MTA in mid-August, a series of recommendations. Our report on the recommendations and findings were about 11 pages long, and a good deal of that is history. I was interviewed by the grand jury, as were a few other folks, about the contents of this report. And there was not a lot of discussion, at least in my interview, having to do with the history of MTA. There was a lot of focus on the telecommunications aspect, the 5G. And the explanation continuing is that we've been preempted by the federal government and state government from dealing with those aspects of telecommunications policy locally and otherwise. The costs have declined. We do manage the collection of franchise fees and peg fees and the distribution thereof. We also oversee the franchises themselves. There are three franchises in Marin County, Comcast, AT&amp;T, and Horizon, which only serves unincorporated county. And each one of those franchise agreements, even though a good deal of the activity under that franchise is covered by the state franchise, there are still elements of it that have to be monitored at the local level. And without MTA, each jurisdiction would have to manage its own franchise, which happens in cities throughout the state of California. With regard to Larkspur, they currently do subcontract with MTA for some services. And so regarding the audits, we don't know what they're going to do going forward. But they do contract with MTA to manage the peg relationship, for instance, under the Designated Access Provider Agreement. So one of the challenges in unwinding MTA is that the responsibilities need to go somewhere else. And that is either, so far, back to the individual jurisdictions and making each one of you responsible for your own franchises, your own collections, your own distribution of peg fees for as long as those revenues exist. Another is MGSA, and that is a possibility. It's been discussed a few times over the last, I believe, three or four years. What MGSA has told me is that they would need to set up a program within MGSA. They don't have existing current staff available to do this work. So it would have to be designed and restructured. And the MTA agreement itself would have to be unwound with the 10 jurisdictions that are currently involved, plus the Larkspur subcontract. So when I was hired a little over a year ago, one of the questions raised by Councilmember McCullough was, "If we're only in this for a couple of years, is that okay with you?" And that was my understanding when I walked in the door, that that was a possibility and that the MTA is an evolutionary organization. And it has changed already. It will change again in the future. Things are happening at the federal level that will have an impact on your franchise fees, your peg fees. And franchise arrangements with DIFCA in the state of California as well. Some provisions FCC has proposed to preempt the state of California's regulations as well as taking as much local control as it possibly can away from individual jurisdictions like yours.
Jean, if you could amplify just a little bit on the DAP agreement. This is the Designated Access Provider Agreement and what peg fees do to support the Community Media Center of Marin. Of course, my colleagues know CMCM and, actually, is the entity that's responsible for streaming and broadcasting our meetings. But explain what happens if the MTA goes away, what will happen with CMCM and what will have to happen with the peg fees that are remitted to CMCM.
Well, the peg fees already have considerable constraints. They cannot be spent on operations, maintenance. They can only be spent on capital expenditures. So the CMCM is responsible for basically providing its own operational framework. The money that is generated by peg fees are actually paid directly by subscribers and collected by the franchise, cable franchise holders, and then distributed to us on a quarterly basis. And they're passed through 100% to CMCM. They go into capital funds, and they're used to provide the equipment and update it periodically. And as we all know, electronic equipment needs to be updated periodically. And so for each one of the jurisdictions, CMCM actually goes in, designs the setup for the particular council chambers, and then monitors the use of equipment, plus manages the transmission of the broadcast, like tonight, back to the studios, processes it, and uploads it for public viewing.
So one complication, Jean, is that much of the capital inventory, the equipment that CMCM uses is in fact owned by the MTA?
That's correct. Almost all of the capital equipment, the facility itself, the rent and the structure, is not. But anything that peg fees have been spent on is actually physically in the ownership of the Marin Telecommunications Agency, according to the Designated Access Provider Agreement.
So if San Rafael is 26% of the MTA and it withdraws, and let's say the MTA dissolves and everybody else withdraws as well, would San Rafael then, in some sort of cooperation with the other jurisdictions, have to somehow take over the DAP agreement, the ownership of these assets? Or would it be more complicated than that?
That's a very good question. And if you decided to utilize some elements of MGSA, for instance, the potential exists that the DAP agreement could be renegotiated, but it would have to be renegotiated. The current agreement is with the MTA and CMCM. And so you'd have to sit down either as an individual jurisdiction or another alternative to MTA to make that agreement occur.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
My sense is that Rebecca's going to be grumpy tomorrow if we don't close this thing down pretty soon. Can we have a motion regarding this item?
I would be delighted to move that. And we adopt the staff report on, I believe, as our discussion tonight has shown, adopt the resolution, and this topic requires further analysis. Therefore, I move that we adopt the resolution before us.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy?
Aye.
Councilmember Collins?
No.
Councilmember Gamblin?
No.
Councilwoman Vice Mayor McCullough?
Aye.
Mayor Phillips?
I have great confidence in our MTA representative, and therefore shall vote aye. And the matter carries three to two. Thank you. Anything further? Let's see. Where's my agenda? Sorry about this, folks. I've misplaced my agenda. Is there anything else on this agenda?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, you had made what, sort of early councilmember reports on the agenda. So I would suggest that you pick those up at this time. That's what I'm referencing, is your comments regarding the flag, et cetera. We sort of inserted those as... Mayor was making councilmember reports early. Now we would request that you conclude councilmember reports.
Thank you very much. Any councilmembers' reports? Oh, I'd like to repeat what I said earlier. Hearing none, no successor, therefore we are adjourned.